Maybe you can just let them know we haven't, just tell them we have technical difficulties.
No, but I want it to be.
I'm making sure.
Well, I bet that's the best stuff. I have a rule that I can only eat one, like special meal a day. Like I can't eat like East Indian food and then eat Italian. I have to pick one.
You stressed out.
Because otherwise I get really sick.
So you're stressed out?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm real tight this morning from the gym. Usually I do yoga in the morning, but because I had to be here at this time, I couldn't. I couldn't get it in this morning.
And Chinese for large.
It was crazy.
So how many people are you expecting?
So this is all the council. Uh, we're our department. So over maybe about an little bit.
Okay. Hello? Are these on?
Actually, it's South Carolina, rest of the speaking. Some of them are due to council. So we have a couple of individuals who are going to be, you know, really attentive. Not that everybody won't be, but just some of you could be really beneficial for them.
Yeah.
FYI, council members, if you want to talk in the mic, make sure you have your mic on. Otherwise.
Are they on? Is it on now?
No.
Okay.
Oh, yes, ma'am, sorry.
So can you hear me?
Okay.
All right.
Good morning. Let me welcome you to the 2021 Richmond County Council Annual Retreat. We would start this morning with introductions and then I'll follow with the purpose of our retreat. And then Mr. Brown would talk, walk us through the agenda for the retreat. As I am, start with welcomes. Let me ask, starting from my right, Mr. Walker, and ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, their district, and then we'll proceed from there. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Joe Walker, representing District Six.
Jessica Mackey, District Nine.
Bill Malinowski, District One.
Yvonne Aguarat, District Three.
Gretchen Behren, District Seven.
Shaquise Newton, District Eleven.
Allison Teratio, District Five.
Derek D, District Two.
Good morning, Cheryl English, District Ten.
Thank you. Let me thank my colleagues very, very much. Remember, the purpose of this annual retreat is an opportunity for us to bring the county council and staff together to talk about unique ways in which we can move our county forward. An opportunity for us to bond and improve communication, an opportunity for teamwork, as well as to focus on certain goals and issues and concerns as relates to the county. We think retreats are very important. It oftentimes offers an opportunity for planning, brainstorming, you know, introduction of new ideas. So that makes it extremely important for our county government. Now normally, you know, different retreats would have different agendas and so forth. One thing that's unique about this particular agenda is the fact that we're focusing on issues like ethics, as well as looking at, you know, the administrative, council administrative form of government. And the reason why we're focusing on those things early in this agenda is because of some of the concerns and issues asked of the new members. Remember, we have five new members, and we think it's important for those members to start out with that particular information. You know, I can identify with that concern of my new members. When I was first elected to the county council, I was among five new members. That was the first and only time that ever happened. And so I'm aware of the need to have that kind of information ahead of time. So I'm glad that we're prepared to move forward with the agenda, with the beginning of our retreat with that information. Hopefully, we'll use this time as quality time, an opportunity again for us to engage in important dialogue on behalf of Richmond County Council. With that said, I'll ask Mr. Brown to come forward and walk through the agenda with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. In your agenda package, we will duly proceed as follows for today. Our first presenter is here this morning. Our caller, Buck Shortling. Her name is Megan Walker. She's the Executive Director of the South Carolina Ethics Commission. Followed by their presentation. Ethics will move to a physical update, followed by the operating form of government. I apologize, I missed it. The first presenter is Mr. Simpson. Session One, operating form of government. Followed by that presentation. Then we'll have ethics. We'll move from there to a physical update. We will have lunch. There is a space for us to have lunch here. We'll go on site for that time we spend away from the retreat. At 2:30, we'll come back for the state of the county, followed by a legal update, and then we'll move to Session Two, which is the transportation justice committee update. Tomorrow, we do have some agenda changes. We will start with a land development rewrite, but the following presentation was strategic planning. They, particularly, cannot be present. What we will do is I will provide you with an outline of strategic goals and objectives that I have set for you. Review, provide feedback. And then from there, you can use any of your time for the follow-up from today or for the questions that you may have from later on in our presentations. So with that being said, you are going to go ahead and proceed with your agenda as printed for today. We're going to call forward Ms. Lesby Simpson with the South Carolina Association of Counties to come through for your presentation.
Thank you for today. I am excited to be with you. I want to give some information regarding to county government. There is a power conference that I've scheduled. A lot of them pulling that, pulling that up. As it was stated, I work for the South Carolina Association of Counties, so I work for you. I am a lobbyist, one of the lobbyists, and several lobbyists. And we represent your interests at the State House. We are involved in policy development, and we just, I believe that you just received the policy statements for 2021. We were involved in steering those committees. And so if you're ever having any questions with what's happening at the legislature, please feel free to reach out to us to provide you with updates. We send out a weekly Friday report just to let you all know what's been happening at the State House and what's upcoming, any introduced bills. You've been following the General Assembly lately. The House is focusing on COVID note team, and the Senate is focusing on COVID. And so those are the two issues that have been discussed at the council. So basically, county government is governed by the whole rule law that was enacted in 1975. The Act provides for three forms of government for municipality and five forms of government for county, one of which, which is called a commission form, was ruled unconstitutional. The Act designated the general powers of county government. Okay, thank you. Who goes to the next slide, please? All right. So to continue, the counties have authority to, we have general police powers as county government. You have the authority to enact regulations, resolutions, ordinances that are all not inconsistent with the Constitution and the general laws of the state, basically. As it appears necessary and proper for the security and general welfare and convenience of the jurisdiction or for preserved health, peace, order of good government. I want to sidebar some section numbers in the code, Section Four, Nine, Twenty-Five, chapters, this. If you ever want to just go back to just get some re-pressure on exactly what the general police powers are, you can reference this code. Next slide, please. Going into Section Four, Nine, Dash Thirty, some enumerated powers that you have, or you could adopt, use, and revise in corporate seal. You can acquire real property by purchase or gift, to sell, lease, or otherwise dispose of real and personal property, and to acquire tangible personal property and supplies. You can also make and execute contracts and to exercise powers of eminent use of domain for county purposes, except under the lien concern of the voters of public use. Next slide. Followed with some additional enumerated powers in Section Four, Nine, Dash Thirty. You are able to assess property and levy ad hortum property taxes and uniform service charges, including the powers to tax different areas at different rates related to the nature and level of governmental services provided in the co-creations for functions and operations of the county. Also, you're able to establish such agencies, departments, boards, commissions, and positions in the county, as may be necessary, and properly to provide services of local concern for public purposes. Next slide. You have some more enumerated powers. To develop personnel system policies and procedures for county employees, though which all county employees are regularly, except those elected directly by the people, and to be responsible for the employment and discharge of county personnel in those departments in which employment authority was vested in county government. And just as a side note, the disemployment and discharge authority doesn't extend to any personnel employed in other departments or agencies under the direction of elected officials or any official appointed by an authority outside of county government. And that really comes into play, you have elected county officials by the coroner and the sheriff. Next slide. To continue with your enumerated powers, to provide for an accounting and reporting system whereby funds are received, safely kept, allocated, and dispersed, to provide for land use and prerogative regulations pursuant thereto, and to also establish and implement policies and procedures for the issuance of revenue in general obligation funds subject to the bonded debt limitation. Next slide. Also, you're able to grant franchises. You're able to levy a uniform license taxes upon persons and businesses engaged in or intending to engage in a business occupation or profession. You're also able to participate in multi-county projects and programs authorized by the general law of corporate fund security. Next slide. As county council members, you're able to enact ordinance for the implementation and enforcement of the powers granted in this section, Section Four, Nine, Dash Thirty, and provide penalties for violators to therefore not to exceed the penalty jurisdiction of the magistrate or court. You're also able to undertake and carry out slum clearance and redevelopment work in areas which are predominantly slum or blighted, the preparation of such areas for reuse, and the sale or under disposition of such areas to private enterprise with private use, or to public bodies for public uses. Next slide. You're also able to conduct an advisory referendum. You're able to enact ordinances to regulate solicitation within the county for requiring comments therefore. You're able to obtain injunction relief in the court of common plea to evade nuances created by the operation of business establishments in an excessively noisy or disorderly manner which serves for peace in the community in which such establishments are located. Next slide. And the last of your enumerated powers, you're able to exercise such powers as may be authorized for counties by the general law. Next slide. So if you're not aware, there are 36 counties in South Carolina. And we have four forms of government, as I discussed earlier. We have six counties that are the council form of government. You have four counties that are the council, the council slash supervisor form of government. You have 34 counties, which are the council administrator form of government. And then you have two counties that are the council managers or the council of government. Richmond County happens to be the council administrator form of government. We'll go into that more in detail in next slide. Do you just want to know what other counties are involved in the council administrator? These are the counties that fall under those forms of government. It is not uncommon for county council members to get advice from other counties that deal with the same form of government. Does this stuff that they're unfamiliar with or a nuanced situation? So if you wanted to know who else that works and operates just like you, these are the following counties. And it's most of the counties of the state. Next slide. And this is just a visual picture of the counties. And as you can see, the red indicates the county council administrator form of government. So it's very, very far and clear between the two of those other forms of government. Next slide. Just a few things about the council administrator form of government, as I stated, 34 counties operate under this form. The council may consist of not less than three nor more than 12 members. That is governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Ten. The council is elected for two or four year term. That is also governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Ten. The legislative power resides with council, which is governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Twenty-Five. The administrative power resides with your administrator, which is governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Thirty. The administrator is hired by council and serves at the pleasure of council. That is governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Twenty. The administrator prepares your annual budget for approval by county council. That is governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Forty. Next slide. So I mean, two important things to take away. The administrator has no authority over other elected officials. And that is governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Fifty. And again, as I stated, other elected officials will be of the court, the coroner, or the sheriff. Council or members cannot give orders to employees under the authority of the administrator. And that's governed by Section Four, Dash Nine, Dash Six, Sixty. So all administrative tasks fall under the purview of your administrator. You certainly are able to inquire about things that you need to inquire about in the administrative purposes or functions are controlled by your administrator. Everything else falls under county council. I believe that is the last slide. Next slide. This is my contact information. I will just let you see my face just a little bit, just in case you are, you see me either at the State House, or if you are, you come to the South Carolina Association of Counties. Our office is located on Richmond Street. As I stated, I'm on your government relations, your lobbyist team. I am an attorney. We have about five or six other staff attorneys that work in the lobbying group. And again, we do control to drive your policy requests at the State House. And I would welcome any question that you may have there.
Any questions?
Talked about personal property and about the government or the council having control that's set over personal property. If you could please explain that, because I don't know how we would have anything to do. It was your slide number three. I don't know how we'd have anything to do with some type of governance over personal property.
If you're talking about slide three. Purchase or gift, dispossess or otherwise dispose of real or personal property, and to acquire tangible personal property and supplies. That is it. We haven't had too many questions about this particular issue. And I did questions before to see exactly how this was going to occur. And I haven't been able to get the exact situation, but because you asked about it, I would make sure that I would give you the exact example to clarify, because that is a question, because it doesn't have anything to do with eminent domain. And so I would question that to see exactly what appearance that would, that it would come up to where that would give county council the ability to take that personal property. So I would look up at that committee as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you, all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
If you had any questions about what's occurring at the State House, I can't tell you all the bills. The survey date is up for third reading after today, which means that more than likely on the Senate side, based upon the makeup of the Senate, it will more than likely pass, barring any catastrophe today. The COVID-19 package deals with who's considered essential workers and who's considered for funding allocations to certain entities outside of care's money. So that's what they're dealing with right now. So both of these bills have successfully received their review. They will swap houses. So those are the first bills that have been tackled as of right now. With regards to what has been, what has been the hot topic, the budget, of course, for those who are not aware because of COVID, we were in the budget discussions around March and April of last year. The COVID, COVID kind of cut down for sure. The General Assembly did meet back in September of 2020 to pass a continuing resolution that continued the 2019, 2020 budget for this current year until they're able to reevaluate when they came back into session. Currently, budget discussions are going on both counties, but it has been in detail in the House, way of the meetings. They have been discussing the local government fund. They have been discussing DEHAD. We have requested to be fully funded for the local government fund from what we have, the information that we have been receiving thus far, that we didn't know what was going to happen. I know part of, because the reserves are low with COVID, a lot of the requests from the agencies from the state are to either power the funding that they requested last year. Not many have requested more than, because some of the care's money has been able to supplement any needs that they've needed in the past year legally that they're using it for. So not too many, and I don't believe, not too many people have actually asked for more. It's either to have them funded at the same level. Some have actually asked for less, because of the cost of operation has been less because of COVID, because their offices have been closed and they're not having to provide as much. So bills that have been introduced thus far, we have support claim act bills that have been filed with regards to raising the policy limits. We've had, there's a couple of teacher pay bills that have been filed. There has, there are a couple, not to give whatever side you want to be on, but there are a lot of bills that are trying to legalize marijuana, whether it's legalized a certain amount or decriminalize it in total. So that's something that's going on to happen now also. We have a beginning debate on it, but there's about six or seven bills that have been filed just for that particular topic. Yesterday, there was a a House meeting with regards to Sunday sale of alcohol. And it received a lot of support from the interested stakeholders, the distillers, the spirit lobbyists, they are all in support of that. And what basically that bill does is it authorizes the Sunday sale of alcohol, not just beer and wine, but including alcohol. And it requires that, one, that there be a vote by referendum. If the county decides by referendum, by the voice of the voters, that they want the sale of alcohol, then sale of alcohol, then the Department of Labor is responsible for issuing a comment to those interested partners. So, it does not mean that all entities that, just because the county has voted to have Sunday sale, it doesn't mean that every single business is required to, has to. So, it also gives the business owner the choice to decide if they want to do that or not. And so, that was county related. They are also, a couple of bills that regards to law enforcement regarding psychoactive testing. There's a couple of bills filed for hate crime legislation. There are a couple of bills filed for databases for any law enforcement officers that have been involved in any type of situation. So, that information is housed in a database so that it can be researched further on. Like I said, it's about 800 bills that will file as of beginning of session at the beginning of January. So, that is a lot of bills. There are some mask mandates that have been filed, either to require a mask, a mask mandate, or that mask mandate be voluntary. Any particular questions with any bills that you may be interested in that I may not be able to answer for you, because it's been 800 bills?
Okay, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, my question is not even for you. It's actually for the Chair and the Administrator. I was going to propose, given that, is our next presenter almost here? No?
Yeah, we're about to make that.
Well, I was, what I was going to put forward was the recommendation that in concert with the spirit of Section 1 that we're going through, that the Administrator actually address us as it pertains to the true administration of the county Administrator form of government, and how that communication should look, does look in application. Because I think one of the things that would have helped me on the way in, as a new council person, is understanding, hey, when I, when I get X, Y, or Z from a constituent, or a request, or whatever it may be, and it could, you may say I could still use some help with that today, but, you know, maybe address the true application of the county Administrator form of government from your perspective as the Administrator.
Ms. Simpson, thank you very much.
And I would have the fiscal update team go ahead and prepare while I address the question from Congressman Walker. So, the application of that is that what would happen, if you get a contact from a citizen, any concern, any complaint, any just information that they felt like they wanted to get from the county that you felt staff needs to provide to their citizens directly or through you, then the highest expectation of that is that you would notify me as the Administrator. Now, what I tried to do to all of you at this point is talk about the delegate authority that I have to my present team. As a result of that, I told you that if you have questions related to certain areas, who those Assistant County Administrators are, and for you to also be able to work through them directly. Their job is to then notify me of that information so that I am aware of those communications, in case I even get involved in some shape or fashion to support you or to support them as they try to serve the citizens. So, it's very important, as from a council administrator form of government, while the Administrator has the operational authority, it is not designed that I do every single thing. And so, my nature is that, the expectation is not that you have to only talk to me and no one else, unless I have talked to you about that process. And so, that's what I've done here, is I've tried to empower you through the right people to whom you contact. And they know that you can contact me in no form of communication. So, it's almost that happens, and no one is directing staff to take a specific action for county purposes, being you on the case. I've also tried to communicate to staff that while relationships are important, and I want to develop relationships, if you're ever in a situation where a council member asks you to do something, and you start down their road, even though they may be innocuous initially, when you get to a bind, and you don't know how to respond to a council person, that is my stuff, and you don't know what to do. So, you don't want to be a senior administrator because you're concerned about getting in trouble. You don't want to frustrate the council person because you're concerned about getting in trouble. So, that kind of stuff. So, this is why I'm trying to alleviate those issues by informing the council, of how to have that conversation, and informing the team how to properly interact with the council. You should just be aware of my experience. Anytime you have a staff, they're not at a department level a lot of times, or at some level where they feel as though they can say yes or no to a council person, they may go do what you say because you're a council person. Some people have that mentality, because they look at themselves as unelected, and you being elected. So, their mind says, I must do what the elected people say, because that's my job, because that's what they understand. But that is not a focus as we're talking about here. So, again, I encourage you, if you have information or services that you need immediately or do that, to contact me, either through a phone call or email. But I also share with you, I have Assistant County Administrators that are set up to help administer their government for us. So, it is okay to contact them for those areas of service that they oversee. That makes it more efficient, or more effective, than me getting every single phone call from every single council member for every single issue. The government is designed to do it slowly, but not necessarily. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does. I just wanted, again, from an introductory perspective, I know that historically, this council has struggled with directing subordinate staff to the Administrator as opposed to the Administrator serving as the point of delegation. So, you've addressed it directly. Thank you.
And I would say, we'll go on to the next presentation, that for your own benefit, because you have importance by the state, as I said, you would not be able to do that. To me, it's more about that than your own benefit, than the organizational support. I mean, that's important as well, but we don't want you getting in trouble behind something that you thought was trying to something good, and then you have a violation. All right? So, if we are ready for the fiscal update, you have that presentation up? So, we're going to go ahead and put the fiscal update next. I'm going to ask the Budget and Finance Team to come forward, and we're turning the call over to them.
Good morning. Is that working?
Excuse me, Miss, Miss, your question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, I don't, one of the questions that I have is about how COVID has or has not impacted our budget, our receipts, and our plans. So, wherever that is appropriate in the presentation, I would love for you to address it. And if it's not part of your presentation, then that's a question that I can just ask later.
I think that James Hayes, our Budget Director, will be addressing that. To let you know, at this point, when we look at, and I will let him address it completely in the presentation.
I don't know if this...
We do, at the end of the year, things look relatively stacked from prior years. However, keep in mind, our largest former revenue was just again coming in early in the zebra, January, which is our property tax. We will be very interested to see at that time, you know, over the next month and a half, two months, how that is impacted, as well as our business license revenue and other sources, which we believe will see an impact. So, I will get you more information, and I think you'll be happy to hear some of the things that we're proposing to make sure and inform going forward on those types of issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before I get started? Thank you very much, President. I appreciate that. Chairman Livingston, co-chair of the Board, council members, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this morning, as many of you, many of you I've met, some of you I've met not in person. But I'm Lori Thomas, and I am Assistant County Administrator, and Budget and Finance is my co-chair. And that's something that we'll be focusing on later.
Sorry. So, one is a House member, and one is a Senator. So, it's either one. Doesn't make any difference. No problem. I want to get you the answer to this question, because we had just talked about this. All that question, look what happened. Oh, okay. So, now he said, have we, county's buying property for industrial parks, buying a strip mall. Okay. So, what I'll do is I'll send you an email of this information, so that they can, to answer questions, and we'll go across what she's doing. Oh, yes.
So, many of you here are new, and just like me, it actually makes my job a little bit easier on me, because we're all starting together, and I appreciate that. One of the things that you're going to find on the desktop this morning is a manual, or a little booklet, called The Elected Official's Guide to Fiscal Performance. This is a GFOA presentation, and part of my presentation this morning is to actually tell you why I value the input of GFOA, and why I know our Budget and Finance team do as well. So, I'm going to put a little bit of the guidance principles that we use to actually work our finance processes. Got it. Thank you very much. So, one of the things that I like most about government, and I've been on both the private and the public sector side, is that government is one of the most collaborative industries there is that exists. It's not just collaborative with any organization, but with other government entities. We're willing to share information. We're willing to share things that work and share things that don't. We're going to applaud each other in success, and we're willing to support each other when we're not successful. Private industry doesn't necessarily do that. It's very proprietary. You don't share information with your coworkers. So, things are done very differently, and typically, the only thing that you're concerned about then is what is being done for your shareholders rather than your stakeholders. In the government, there are a lot of stakeholders, number one, your communities and your citizens. So, about 114 years ago, realizing the importance of government finance and support for the government finance officials, the Government Finance Officers Association was formed. This group has grown to be 21,000 members to support the United States and Canadian public finance officials. And they actually issue public best practices that are reviewed on a regular basis by experts in the industry to ensure that we can make positive change, recognize excellence, and not just accept the way that things have been done historically. One of the best practices that I've found very valuable over the years is the best practice of achieving a structurally balanced budget. So, all state and local governments are required to have a balanced budget. But a balanced budget doesn't necessarily mean that it is financially sustainable. For instance, all recurring expenditures should be supported by an equally sustainable recurring revenue stream. A true structurally balanced budget is one that supports financial sustainability for multiple years into the future to be able to support your community. So, how to achieve a financially sustainable, balanced budget? It's very simple. Your recurring expenditures equals your recurring revenue. As such, non-recurring budget dollars should not be used to fund recurring expenditures. If you have a short-term grant, that grant may fund your salaries in short term, but there should be a plan for how to fund those salaries once the grant expires. Requests for additional resources should be vetted to ensure they help to achieve the county's mission to support services to the community and to sustain those communities in the future. Requests for funding outside the budget process should be accompanied by a funding source that the requesting office can provide. What you're looking at now is a grab historical zero funds budgeted expenditures versus revenues. The top chart was expenditures, the bottom was revenues. When you look at the way that the budgets have been prepared for Richmond County for the last five years, in each of those five years, budgeted fund balance was used to sustain the expenditures. However, in the end, the revenues were sustainable enough to not require using those, the fund balance, in but one year, and that was an exception. That's a very positive thing. However, it's not something that if the funds had been used and all expenditures could spend it, that would be sustainable. As a matter of fact, of the approximately 88 budgeted credit, budgeted financing centers in general fund, on average, only two reach or exceeded their budgeted expenditures. Also, there's a list is a copy of the last five historical budgeted, actual expended, and amended budgeted expenses. It's a very detailed list. It's very small. I apologize for it, but I'm happy to discuss any of that information with you, or Mr. Hayes would as well. So, it's a good thing that we didn't draw on the general fund balance. However, it's also worth considering that had we, it would put us in a very different financial position. Mr. Hayes is going to actually go over the fiscal performance in our next section. He'll just work with me for a minute. So, I'd like to shift from budget to fund balance, if you don't mind. Another very important, best practice of the GFOA is the thought that every government should have a policy on unassigned fund balance. So, why do I say unassigned fund balance? Of your fund balance in total, there are four categories of funds. One is committed. Committed funds actually have to be spent for specific activities that have been laid out by the highest legislative body that committed those funds. Typically, this would be used. Second is restricted. These are funds that actually are available, however, they must also be used in accordance with their, with the acceptance policy that we make in those funds. To get a sample of this is grants that may be for specific purposes, or accommodations tax, or hospitality tax, which are derived and directed toward tourists. Next is assigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance is set forward for projects that may be long-term visions, that don't have a fully fledged plan at this point. It's more of an earmark, sets aside a group of funds that you may want to hold on to to perform some project down the road. Then there's the unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is the equivalent of your home savings account. So, what does Richmond County say about unassigned fund balance, and what's our policy? We actually have a very good one. The Richmond County Unassigned Fund Balance Policy says that we will maintain 20% to 35% of our prior year's expenditures in unassigned fund balance. So, we would have 20% to 35% going into the following year if there were to be some catastrophic events, and that's what that should be used for. However, when you look at what our unassigned fund balance is currently, which is just about $43 million, had the expenses or the expenditures that were budgeted in the last two fiscal years actually come to volition, we would be able to lower our threshold for fund balance, for unassigned fund balance. With that, I'd like to provide a few considerations. With that, I'd like to provide a few considerations. Our budget is internal tool, yes, and it's a tool for you to actually direct spending of the county's money. However, we're not the only people that look at it. It's used as a tool for other entities to form opinions of the financial acuity of the county. These opinions impact our credit rating, the cost of borrowing, options for borrowing, recruiting talent, and the ability to achieve long-term goals in the organization and community. So we propose that we balance budget expenditures to those of predicted recurring revenues with budgeted fund balance for only exceptional circumstances. Great exceptional circumstances, we've seen many of them in our, in our history. We saw the Great Depression. We've seen COVID. These are all things that none of us could see coming. Consider actually historic expenditures when preparing budgets rather than historical budgeted expenditures to achieve efficiency and minimize budget impact on the fund balance. Consider an annual budget. Currently, we do a biannual budget. However, if at this point, with the changes in society, planning for one year, planning for one year is difficult, planning for two becomes extremely difficult. It also makes for lots of amendments and lots of considerations that we have to consider. Once we make those commitments to some of these organizations and departments, it's very difficult to roll them back. Consider disallowing movement of or additional council approval for use of non-recurring budgeted expenditures to be used to fund recurring budgeted expenditures for elected officials' offices and to ensure, so that we can ensure our financial stability. Additionally, we like to propose that finance and budget will be provided monthly reports to council and to all department heads so that they can monitor budget compliance and actually be engaged in the process. With that, I'm going to ask that Budget Director James Hayes come up if there's no questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Just one question, as you look at the principles outlined by GFOA, one of the things that I may have missed, I'm just curious about your thoughts about zero-based budgeting, if that's something that would benefit the county if we were to move towards that. Just anything that you've observed in your time here.
Zero-based budgeting is certainly a process that has its place in an organization. And I do believe that it is a great principle because you do start basically with zero. However, for an organization this size, it is also equally important to budget toward outcomes. So one of the, one of the principles that I have seen that is, has been beneficial over my career is to actually outline the priorities of the, of the organization and from that point, you're able to align funds to support those missions and you can actually work out for the departments. But in essence, in the zero-based budgeting that you're referencing, our proposal to move toward historical expenditures as a baseline for budgeting rather than historical budgeting, the historic budget, would put us close to a zero-based budget type of.
Thank you.
No problem. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Mack, go ahead and then Ms. McBride.
Thank you. Can you explain the consideration that you mentioned, consider disallowing movement or additional council approval of, or use of non-recurring budgeted expenditures? Can you give an example of what that means right now as it relates to council?
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to.
Can you repeat the question first?
Sorry, is my mic on?
No, I'm asking.
I just need to talk louder. My question was, could you give an example, based on our current council now, that discusses your consideration, consider disallowing movement or additional council approval of use of non-recurring budgeted expenditures to be used to fund recurring budgeted expenditures for elected officials to ensure financial stability?
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to address that.
Good question.
Some of the concerns, the first time that I first came here, I sat down with staff and said, "Okay, please tell me about things that give you part-time in your daily job. What keeps you up at night?" And as you all know, elected officials serve at a different level than the rest of the departments within the county, so do their staff. So what we're proposing, or what has happened prior, is that you actually had use or proposed use of operating line item that may have been something that might not have been a recurring expenditure that was proposed to be used as salaries. Salaries are a recurring expenditure and they're a compounding expenditure. So once that money is moved into the salary line item, not only do we have to find a way, while it may be covered in year one, we have to find a way to cover that beyond because you can't take it back. Does that answer your question?
Not exactly. Was there a specific example that has happened right now or recently where you could use where that, you feel, you feel that it should not be happening anymore based on your consideration?
As I understand this, this was something that has happened before with, I believe, law enforcement and also with courts.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make a statement regarding the biannual and annual budget. And I, I think you said that the administration is considering recommending an annual budget. Based on, and I'm not a financial person, even though I've done a lot with government budgets, but based on all of the readings I've done, is that it's 50%, one way, 50% the other way, and it's just a matter of choice that one is not actually any better than the other.
Yes, ma'am. It truly is a matter of course, we're just trying to determine the best way forward and it certainly is you all's choice how we move forward. It's just a recommendation.
Right, and I was just saying that based on the research, 50% say it's better for annual, 50% say it's better for biannual, so.
Ms. Sheen.
Thank you for your presentation today. It was very enlightening and I learned a lot. And I'm going back to where Ms. McBride was speaking, and that is the annual budget. Should we decide to go to an annual budget? What besides an annual budget, how, how is that going to look? Is it going to look different? And when, and I'm speaking specifically to uniformity of budget layouts. Of course, we spent a lot of time learning over the last few weeks and reviewing different budgets, especially with the village agencies and things of that nature. I'm concerned about the uniformity. Some, the school district presents one way, the library may present another, but when we get these budgets and we're trying to get through it, you know, it's one thing to look at two years, but if you're going to give us one year, will you also look at some uniformity with what is being submitted?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. What I would propose and what I would like to, most of our village agencies are school-related and there are a few others, I actually will be bringing a liaison to those agencies. And I've worked with many of those financial professionals, as have James and Stacy in our State Government Finance Officers Organization. So I'd like to have some collaboration, let's talk about how would it look and could we find a format that would work for both of us or all of us so that you guys don't have to try to adjust to looking at one group's budget over the other. If by some chance we were to look at a one-year budget, I don't necessarily know that it would just be a one-year budget because I do believe that we could look at some semblance of a proposed second year so that you would actually have a baseline for the second year. It just wouldn't be adopted so that you would, and it could be a balanced situation so that modifications may be simpler through the legislative process. But again, that's your decision. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know whether Mr. Hayes or the administrator, you can answer this question, but it might be helpful for us to understand what actual authority do we have over the village agencies when it comes to approving or disapproving their budget?
With that, I'm going to transition over to James and just say that, that's a great segue, thank you very much. But the next two pages in your book are actually our proposed budget calendar for this fiscal year. And it would give a, we propose lots of opportunities for engagement during workshops and other such things specific to individual areas, the finance portions of the organization. You'll be able to ask questions, you'll be able to dig deeper into specific sections at a time. So I would, I would ask that you take a look at that and ask if any feedback that you might have on it. And always, my door is open. Please feel free to reach out to me, give me a call. I'm happy to meet you individually and we're always happy to provide you any information that you need. Thank you and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
A good point, everyone. Ms. McBride, repeating that question again sometime in the management, you're a little muffled, repeat the question.
Okay. Of the village agencies, when we review their budgets, what actual authority do we have over the approval of the budgets?
Well, for all village agencies, because they, because council has been given the authority by the state, you all have to approve their budget, even though you have governing bodies such as school boards or, or commissions in the case of that, those budgets aren't actually under the authority of county council, so you, because of the village, so you all have to approve their budget as recommended by their governing board.
But we can't go into the details of their budget, picking out different items.
Right, you all basically, again, I can't speak for legal, but it's my understanding, you all just basically approve up and down, up or down, the amount that their board has recommended based off the village.
And that's it? We just, a budget passed.
Again, I don't want to speak for legal, but that's, that's the knowledge that I have.
Mr. Hayes, thank you. So you say we can approve it up or down. So they came to us and they want, you know, $100. Can we say, "We'll give you 90"? I mean, can?
Well, let me, let me start from the beginning. Historically, the village agencies have been, you all have been given two numbers for village agencies by the county audit. You have been given a no-mill increase and you have been given a cap increase. And the village agencies have requests higher than the two, and you all have voted on it. This year, because of COVID, you all required to come back with a much lower number. And with the exception of the school districts, everybody came in less than a no-mill increase. The school districts, of course, came in, the cost of them, they're much larger than everybody else. They came in instead of requesting a cap, they requested a no-mill increase which council approved. So historically, that's been the process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayes. And just to follow up on that, is it, could we, if they said, "Okay, we want no-mill increase," I guess then we would have to vote to do anything less than that?
Right, that's right. They came in and they requested a no-mill increase. Council, of course, could make a recommendation to approve something less than that. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that in mind, it's segue into.
Mr. Hayes, before we move forward, just, just for clarification, just, just remind colleagues though that there are state staters that govern and influence what we can do regarding funding with some of those village agencies. You know, you know, for, for example, you take like the school district. We cannot reduce that budget at certain levels based on state requirements. The Recreation Commission, so forth, so they are limits in terms of what we can do in terms of state stature.
Yeah, that's correct. And again, what I was saying basically going back to Act 388, again, this was from 2006. You all have a direction of approving, either you all can exceed the village cap, there's a cap that you all can go to, but in terms of, like Chair Litcher said, there certainly is a minimum amount based on state stature that you all cannot reduce it by. But in any event, I did want to start a couple of housekeeping notes before we go over the note, go over budget report. You'll notice that our packet will be going over November's reporting. The reason is November because when we began to prepare for the retreat in December, November was the most recently updated month at the time. And we did put a note in the packet that those numbers were continually being ongoing updates, they've been even updated since then. I'm referring back to the question for Councilwoman Newton. We specifically want to know a lot of information for how COVID has impacted the general fund until now, and that's why A.C. Thomas mentioned that you'll be giving council monthly updates going forward. Because the general fund itself, the vast majority of private tax burden is credited in the months of December and January, and the Treasury Department and the finance staff are continually updating those numbers. So right now, we're going over November and the general fund portion of revenue in November is very small compared to what's coming forward. But we do plan on updating council going forward starting in February about where we stand on how COVID has impacted general fund revenue. The second housekeeping note is we're going to four types of reports per fund. There are two types of expenditure reports and two types of revenue reports. The expenditure report simply a budget to action showing what's been budgeted for a department or fund versus what they have expended through that time in November. We're doing a yearly comparison report where we compare, we're in FY '21 now, so November 20 is FY '21, and you can compare that to expenditure in November 2019, XY, FY '20. And then we also do the same thing for the revenue. You have budget to action, meaning what was budgeted for revenue versus what has been received up through that time. And then another yearly comparison between revenue November 20 and revenue November 2019. So there are four types of reports for each fund. So with that in mind, we start, our first slide, with the big boys, we call it the general fund. And as you see, the way to understand this is we start with, you see the various departments that are budgeting the general fund. You have the adjusted budget, year-to-date expenditures, what a department has in commerce and what they have left in speed. Now, I did want to issue a caveat, so we call a man remember that, so we did the last one. There are two types of budget. There's the appropriation budget, as when it comes from council. When you all pass the budget July 1, fresh from the press, as you will, the budget is appropriated. Once it gets in the hands of departments and changes happen, the budget is now adjusted. Those changes could be something as simple as the department moving money from one object over to another. It could be a separate situation in which departments are moving money to funds that were unexpended in the prior year and with permission of the county legislator to move them to fund things that are ongoing in the current year. It could be POs, incommissions, contracts, things that were projects that were ongoing that were not completed and they rolled into the next year. Or it could be something as big as council decided to do a budget limit. But in any event, after July 1, once changes take place, it's called the adjusted budget. So what we have here for the general fund is the adjusted budget for each one of the different departments, what they expended, what they have left on PO and then what they have left in speed. And I might just call it here the last one, if it shows what percentage has been expended through that month. You say, "Why is that important?" Because each month has a benchmark percentage. Like for November, that benchmark was 42%. Five, five, twelve. If we find that a partner's percentage is above the benchmark percentage for a month, that's a red flag for us to budget and we want to get in contact with the director and say, "Hey, what are you going on?" We need to warn them, if you will, we need to see what's going on and find out why their percentages exceed what the benchmark percentage is. I want to go down. I want to know actually the total of the general fund. So through November, again, these numbers are continuing to be updated. But I want to, zero ahead on the bottom line number. So the 198 year, was the general fund adjusted budget? So the 198 million was the general fund adjusted budget through November 30. The 185 represents the expenditures of that 188. I want to explain that for a moment. The general fund has two types of expenses, as you call them. You have actually expenditures that the general fund supports, but the general fund also supports other departments. So you have transfers out, and you may have noticed that on slide number earlier that I was showing you. That 12.6 billion, that represents funds that go out of the general fund to support other funds, be it economic development, emergency telephone, public, and things of that nature. So the general fund not only supports its own expenditure, it supports other funds as well. So hence the total of 185 total in budgeted general fund expenditures, but it also supports other funds to the tune of almost 13 million that we have in total of 198. I just wanted to take a moment to explain that. Any questions? But the key thing in that note here is that of that 198.2 million that we budgeted through November at that time, and the numbers have been updated, we had expended 64.6 million. There was still 13 million left on incomers, and the department still had 119.8 million to expend. This is the key number, the benchmark percentage. Because that number is below 42%, that means we were trending well through the month of November. Now, that number probably is slightly higher since they're a bit updated, but as long as we're trending below the benchmark, we're trending well. And that actually goes back to something that ACA Thomas mentioned, that actually has historical, what I'm asking here, actually have come in under budget, which is a good thing. But if we ever come at a time when we actually expand 100% of our budget, that's not going to be good on the company front, because one of the means to support that is not just revenue, we're using fund balance support. So it's critically important that we continue to be fiscally prudent and make sure that departments understand it's a good thing to not spend all the funds.
Mr. Hayes? A question about what you just said. If I understood part of ACA Thomas's presentation correctly, the idea is that moving forward with our budget, you will be using as a baseline funds that were actually expended versus funds that were budgeted. Is that a correct assumption?
Everybody just has to get out on the street further. I think that's what I'm standing, trying to get to where we actually budget the action.
So then, following that premise, if we are budgeting to actual, then that makes it more likely that we would dip into fund balance. I'm trying to phrase this the right way. The problem that you just highlighted about problematic spending, if we spent everything that we budgeted, becomes more crucial if we're budgeting more closely to what we've expended in the past. I'm not sure if I'm...
Yeah, that's right.
Is that a correct presumption?
Right, right. So you're right. So it's because we're budgeting to what we actually have. In other words, your budget and error will be much smaller. That's correct. I see what you're saying. That's correct, Stephen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Paul, before? I know I have to go a little fast here. So again, this is the general fund. So essentially, we're showing you...
Excuse me, hold on a minute. Mr. Hayes? Mr. Hayes? I think a colleague had another question. Mr. Mountain, ask him.
That's okay. Mr. Hayes, and maybe you're going to come back and touch on this, but we had, when you were talking about that 42% benchmark, not knowing that and looking at these figures when they were given to us, it's obvious there's a couple of departments that are, have far exceeded that, and I'm wondering if you're going to come back and tell us, because you said that, hey, it's time to go to those departments and say, hey, whoa, what's going on here? And, of course, voter registration, health department, and another couple in there. I'm wondering if you're going to come back and tell us about that?
Yes, Mr. Mountain, we're really going for it, as the ACA Thomas mentioned, once we give reports to council, any department that are problematic, we, through county legislative research, we have an update on those departments.
Thank you.
So the next slide, we want to show you just the comparison, yearly comparison. November '20, the general fund was 64.0, November '21, we had expended 64.6 million. A year ago that time, we expended 72 million, so we see we're much smaller. And most of that had to do with, of course, transfers out. The finance office does continuously, excuse me, continuously does actually transfer out throughout the year. So the difference between November of '20 and November '21 had to do with the transfer out being posted out later, later. Now we come to the revenue side. As you can see, this is what we, with budget and general fund revenue, 194 million. Through November, we had picked up 38, as I was saying, that most of our revenue comes in after the fact, and then we still have 155 until November.
Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Hayes?
Just for information, I understand you know the revenue, but you might want to go over what our revenue, what that means for our revenue budget.
Right. So as you can see, there are basically three categories, what we call some uses. Three categories of uses. So that 169.5 and 5.9 and 9.21 represents the actual revenue that we've budgeted for the general fund. 3 million of that, then besides that, there's another category of 3 million that is budgeted transferred in the department, that general fund not only supports other funds, it also is support of one fund in particular, and that's the hospital. And then the big number up above is, and this is what ACA Thomas mentioned earlier, the fund balance. A lot of that was budgeted, roughly 8 million of that was budgeted as part of the appropriated budget. But whenever you roll funds over from the prior year to the current year, you're also using fund balance, so we often have to do a budget entry for that. And there were a couple of budget limits that council did in the fall for economic development and for the law enforcement that pushed the use of fund balance numbers up. So these numbers comprise what we have heard of budget for revenue. Again, what's budgeted is pure revenue, we call it. What comes in to support the general fund from another 08 tax. And then the big number on top, use of fund balance. Is that your budget?
Yeah, because our revenue funding is coming from what agencies, from what entity the revenue funding we're getting.
So most of the, so the general fund has several different categories of revenue. The vast majority of it is property taxes, but we do have fees and fines and other things of that nature. So it's a smorgasbord of funding. It's not, the vast majority is property taxes, but we do have fees and fines. And also, as the young lady mentioned earlier, the local government fund. So the general fund has several different types of funding sources.
That's it. Thank you.
So what I want to do now is show you the yearly comparison between what was, what we had received in the general fund from November 21st, November 20, which is FY '21 versus November 2019. So as you can see, there's a 7.2 million difference between what we had picked up last year at this time versus what we currently have. But again, that's not necessarily to be an alarming rate, yeah, we won't sound alarmed at we started getting property taxes. So, but currently, due to, again, just keep in mind, also, these numbers were, again, ongoingly updated by the Treasury Office. So that 38 million certainly could be much larger than that.
Mr. Hayes, what's the primary source of that 46 million dollar in terms of revenue? What's the primary source? We know it's not profit tax, because we...
Well, you see, the vast majority of that is just your pure revenue. You know, it could be, you know, profit taxes, fees, fines. It's just revenue that is germane to the general fund.
Thank you.
But again, that 38.9 million, November reports were ongoing to be updated, that number certainly could be much larger. Again, when you report in February, we're having much more updated November for council. And I will move on to, and I will move on to fast here, because I know my time is running short. But now, this is the special revenue fund. So simply the same procedure, you show what was budgeted for the, and we didn't highlight all of our special revenue fund, we just wanted to highlight some of the more prominent, some of the bigger ones, like a fire service, H tax, ATAC, road maintenance, transportation. But the plus was still the same, it shows what was budgeted for that department, what they had expended through that day, what was left on PO, and then the balance shows what department had left to spend through the rest of the year. So that's special revenue fund budget action. This is a special revenue, actual revenue. So again, what was budgeted for the revenue for those funds, what was received through that day, and what was left in FDC. Compare what was expended in the special revenue to November 20 versus November 19. 26.7 million, November 20, 27.1 million, November 21. So you see, it's pretty close, pretty close to each other. The follow-up is transportation, capital project, what was expended through November 21 versus November 20, and versus what was expended through November 19. 9.7 versus 8.1. Revenue comparison for special revenue fund, we have received 49.7 million in FY '20 versus That would go to our enterprise fund, yes, I mentioned them. What was budgeted, expenditure total, 50.6. Expended through November, 14.7. PO, incomers, 23.3, 12.6 left to spend, like we said here. Revenue, budgeted revenue, 46 million. We have picked up, this is enterprise fund, again, these are fees for services. We have two primary revenues, two primary enterprise funds, utilities, and solid waste. So it's a fee for service, budgeted revenue, 46 million through November at that time, we picked up 14.4, we're still waiting to collect 31.6. But again, we're going to give council updates for February. Yearly comparison, expenditure, November 2019, 13, I mean, November, excuse me, he said, January. We still have 43.5. Debt service comparison, November 19, 2 million, 60,000, November 20, 2.2 million. So roughly, that's it. Revenue, November 2019, 1.9 million, November 21, 1.7 million, so real close to each other. I know we had to go fast today, but I can answer any question if you'd ask.
Any questions? Not, thank you very much, Mr. Hayes.
We got some time? We have some time?
I got to get on the low, I'm shorter than everybody.
Just direct your hand. Direct your hand, Paul, for a moment now. One moment.
Okay.
Let me, it's gonna be a better time to take a break at this time, so we can come back in time for our virtual presentation that's scheduled.
We'll be back in a minute. We're going to take a break, and then Paul come up after the other speaker. And then let me attach that first.
Yeah, we'll start back at 10:40, get back on the grid with the ethics session.
Yeah, we'll start back at 10:40, get back on the grid with the ethics session.
No, it's okay, I was just like, I just wanted to understand what I was or was not.
Hello, everyone, we're ready to, um, get started. We're going to, um, now have a, um, presentation, uh, reference ethics, um, from Miss Megan Walker, with, who is the exec director of South Carolina Ethics Commission. Mr. Brown, we're ready to go with this presentation.
Yes, yes. I think the...
She was a second.
Now, again, this is a virtual presentation.
Okay, are y'all my hooking ring?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so, I am, I know, I'm a director of the South Carolina State Ethics Commission, and as you're all aware, um, that you guys have certain duties within the state of the act. So, one of the things that we try to do is we do, uh, pro act and engage in public citizens, so that y'all are well aware of the duties under the act, and so that you guys don't, you don't violate the act, so that you can know what you are about. So, if you have any questions in this, this presentation, please let me know, I'll be asking style, and if you have any, uh, any questions, um, at any point in time. The goal, or actually, we need, uh, conversation, is for all of us to be, uh, more comfortable with the ethics commission, with the ethics act, um, and, and we call and, uh, depending every, every question, I'm gonna do my best. So, State Ethics Commission, um, we are proud of A P H, the Congress, the Congress of the citizens' challenge, so we're really with the way we're going to go into the South Carolina, we're doing this to do that challenge. Since, um, April two thousand and seventeen, we now have an A P H mission. One more, what about the governor?
They have to take their microphone, they have to take their microphone.
One by, one by, one by, one by, one by, one by.
We now have jurisdiction, not only over locally, um, elected and statewide elected, um, officials, but we now have investigative jurisdiction over members of the General Assembly. So, we handle those complaints and investigate those complaints the same as, as we do with mayors, uh, county council members, or, or even the governor. Who does the act cover? The act covers public officials, um, such as yourselves, public members, the people that y'all appoint to part-time boards, or, or councils, and public employees. So the, uh, the people who work for not only just the, the state of South Carolina, but for each county, um, and municipality as well. There are a couple of things that get, um, elected officials in trouble most often. These are failing to file the required financial disclosures. There are two types of financial disclosures that an elected official must file. There are campaign disclosures and statements of economic interest. The statement of economic interest is the financial disclosure regarding the finances, um, that affect your, your household. Every council member must file a, um, a financial disclosure every year by March thirtieth. So for the, um, twenty twenty-one calendar year, your, um, your disclosure is due by March thirtieth, keeping in mind that what you're choosing is the income for the twenty twenty calendar year, and that's every year. If you are newly elected, you must file a statement of economic interest prior to being sworn in and assuming your official duties. Does anybody have any questions about the timing of a statement of economic interest? Okay.
I don't, I don't...
The information that's required on your statement of economic...
Excuse me, um, I do have one personal question.
I don't have a question about the timing. I do have a question about those who serve on public boards. So for instance, um, in my position on council, I also serve on the comment board. Do I have to file something separately for that?
No. No, there are certain, there are certain times where you will see one public official who has statements of economic interest because of certain boards. So, for example, the prosecution, individuals on the prosecution commission have to file a statement of economic interest, as do elected solicitors. There are elected solicitors who are appointed because of their position as solicitors to the prosecution commission. You will see that when they file, they file for those, for both of those positions. But that is because individuals on the prosecution commission, because it's a statewide council, have to file statements of economic interest. We don't require members of the comment board to fire, to file statements of economic interest, so you don't have to disclose your appointment to that board.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I have another question, was that Mr. Letson?
I was just making sure you heard, Mrs., um...
Okay. All right, so, let's talk about the type of information that you have to file on your statement of economic interest. Y'all keep in mind, um, that as an elected official, there is someone, somewhere in your community who does not like you. And those people will go online after you file your statement of economic interest, and pour over it with a five proof code, and if you fail to disclose something, they will call and tell. So these are the things that I really, really want you to be as thorough as possible when you, when you're filing these documents. You must report the source type and amount or value of income, and that doesn't include, um, refund, tax, tax refunds, or anything like that. But you must file the type and, and the source and amount of value of income for government salaries, so for any public salary. So let's say there's an elected official who is also a schoolteacher. That person would need to file their salary that they receive as a schoolteacher. This goes not only for you, but for the members of your household. So for your income, for a spouse's income, or for a child who lives with you and who is a dependent, and that goes for their income as well. If your income, the source of your income is a private source of income, then you must include the source and type of that income, but not the value. For, for a, a, let's say, one person is a government employee, and the spouse works for Dominion. They would put the source type and amount of their government income, and then the source of the private income that their spouse earns, as far as it being, you know, Dominion, the type of the family income. I will say this, if you have questions about whether or not you need to disclose something, it doesn't hurt to go ahead and disclose it. You will never, ever get in trouble with the State Ethics Commission for getting too much information. So go ahead and disclose it. If you have a question, call our office, and we will walk you through that process as to whether or not to disclose it. Keeping in mind that all statements of economic interest for every required filer is by March thirtieth, meaning that everybody may have the same question around March twenty seventh, or twenty eighth, or twenty ninth, okay? Because, and, and I say this, y'all, as a lifelong South Carolinian, we are not going to get ahead of the game. If it's due March thirtieth, we're gonna start working on it on March thirtieth. And that has an influx of, of telephone calls that come into our agency, and then people get frustrated because it takes a long time to, to phone calls if we don't have someone available to help at that moment. With that being said, you can file your statement of economic interest today, you could have filed it on January first. Go ahead and start collecting your tax information and things of that nature that you need, and that way you can call us, ask these questions, uh, as these questions arise, and you don't, you're not in that point of readiness yet. Does anyone have any questions on how to disclose income?
Uh, yes, I have a question for you. So when, when you talk about government entities, does that also include retirement from state or federal entities?
No, so, what we are looking, keep it, keep in mind that the purpose of the statement of economic interest is to disclose sources of income that can, uh, kind of affect your decision making, right? Retirement income is not, um, required to be disclosed, because that's an income you've already earned, there's nothing that's going to necessarily affect your current decision making based upon your retirement. But if you have an employer now, perhaps the, that income could be, could affect the decisions that you make on council. The goal is to allow the public to, to have some insight into income, not only of a public, um, official such as yourselves, but public employees, uh, like me, to make sure that when we make decisions, we are making a decision that is in the best interest of the people we serve, and not in our own disinterest. So it's that active income that we are really, really looking to capture and disclose to the public. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, my microphone was someplace else. Uh, we're on, in terms of disclosing income from government entities, just, if you have a business that receives the income for that, from an entity, and you're disclosing the income of the business, do you have to separately report income that might have been received from a government agency?
Is it your own entity?
Part, yes, yes.
So, is money from Richland County?
No, so I'm saying hypothetically, let's say that my personal business does work with the government agency A. So I would disclose income that is received to my business, do I also have to separately say, by the way, government agency A paid funds to my business?
Right, and that's why I think if, if the governmental entity that your business is doing business with, is the governmental entity that you turn to.
Uh, no.
So if it, if it's not, and that money, if it's a, if it's a business and you draw a salary from that... a salary from that, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. Were you finished with your question?
Yes.
Okay, if it's a, okay, and you draw a salary from that business, then not necessarily. If it is a, if it is a business that, that does business with a governmental entity and you are paid directly, let's say a bonus for, for working through that, through that governmental entity, then probably you need to disclose that. If it is your own governmental entity, if your business does business with Richland County, then you definitely need to disclose.
Thank you.
All righty. Yeah, the other information that you must disclose on your statement of economic interest are the reimbursements that you make for, um, speaking, for speaking engagements. Keep in mind that as a public, um, public official, you cannot be paid to give a speech in your official capacity. But if you are asked to speak, let's say that, um, the Association of Counties asks you to do a presentation, um, and they are going to reimburse your actual expenses. You need to keep a running tally of those expenses and make sure that you disclose that on your statement of economic interest. And that's for, for every speaking engagement where you are reimbursed your actual expenses and are speaking in your, uh, official capacity. If you have a business and as a part of your business, you, um, are a motivational speaker, and that is independent of your service as a public official, then you need not disclose that income. As a speaking engagement income. All right, so here is Governor Haley's, um, statement of economic interest. And you see, it's just one that's properly filled out. She put, put her, uh, her income as well as the, uh, source of private income. She went over and above, uh, the disclosure requirements by putting the actual amount of, of private income, which she was not required to do. All right, if your S E I looks like this, I can click on income and benefits and you have no personal income, um, to disclose, no family income to disclose. What that tells me is that you are retired, um, and everyone who lives with you is either retired or unemployed. If anyone in the household has a job, there should be some disclosure here. We have had, um, issues with, and this goes more for public employees than, than it does for elected officials, but if you are also a public employee and, and a public official, keep this in mind, that, um, your salary is often on the salary database. And so people go in and look at your salary that's on the salary database and the salary that you disclose, um, as a part of, of your statement of economic interest. And those two things are different than complaints are filed. So keep in mind that you, that when you are disclosing, uh, government income, you are disclosing the gross amount, and that is, um, prior to, uh, any deductions or withholdings. Those are your financial disclosures. So when is your statement of economic interest due?
March 30th.
All right, thanks y'all. The, uh, the, the other type of disclosure, and this is something that, that I'm sure you all have experience with, is the quarterly campaign disclosure. The quarterly campaign disclosure is not your personal income. This, this is the income that goes into your campaign checking account and that you use to fund your campaign. Information on your campaign disclosure is the total amount of, of contributions accepted with the date and amount of each contribution, and the name, address, and occupation of, of each person making a contribution. When you fill this out, please don't just put requested in the box for address or occupation. Make sure you are getting that information because it's, it's required, um, for short to the statement. Also, the total amount of expenditures made. So, and it's the same, name, address of each person or entity to whom an expenditure is made, and the date, amount, and purpose of that expenditure. When you are, um, filing this, please keep accurate accounts, um, of, of campaign contributions made. The easiest way for, for someone to file a complaint against this is for someone to have made a contribution to your account, to then go online and not see their contribution disclosed. That's the, that's the easiest way for, um, for, for complaints to, to come about from campaign disclosures. Also, keep in mind that we, we do have random audits. And so there, there will be a time where we randomly audit a campaign account and, and look at the disclosure and the actual campaign account bank records to make sure that those two things match up. So make sure that for every contribution you accept, it's disclosed, and for every expenditure you make, that's disclosed. So when do you file your campaign disclosure? Keep in mind that you must have a campaign checking account. You, if, if you are raising or spending money. If you're not doing either of those things, then you don't have to have a campaign checking account. But I know, um, most individuals who run for office in our larger, uh, larger counties do, do spend money, they do raise money, and it's thus a campaign checking account is required. When you raise, um, or expend $500 in aggregate, you are required to file your initial campaign disclosure. After that, you must file a quarterly campaign disclosure until your bank account, your campaign account reaches zero, and you are ready to close that account out. So if you, if in February, you raise, um, or, or spend in aggregate $500, that is when your initial report is due. You will then file one quarterly. So for January, February, March, that's the first quarter, that campaign disclosure is due by April 10th. For April, May, and June, that disclosure is due by July 10th. For July, August, September, that disclosure is due by October 10th. And for October, November, and December, that disclosure is due by January 10th. You also, um, keep in mind that there's a pre-election report. That means that between 15 and 20 days before an election, you must file a campaign report showing contributions of, uh, more than $100 in expenditures for the period ending 20 days before the election. So the purpose of it is really just to capture all of those expenditures and, uh, contributions made between right before the election and when your last quarterly campaign report was filed. And this is what, this is what they look like. This is again Governor Haley's, um, this is again Governor, uh, Governor Haley's, and you can see in that quarter, she didn't raise any money. Even if you do not raise money or spend any money in a quarter, as long as you have money in your account, you must still file a campaign report. Your campaign report will simply show that you did not, that you did not raise or spend any money. But inactivity does not mean you don't file. It means that you keep filing until that bank account reaches zero. Once it reaches zero, you can close it out. Let's say it hasn't reached zero and you're ready to close it out, and you have $500 left in your account. You can bring that account to zero in a few ways. One, you can prorate it and, and return that money to your contributors. Two, you can donate it to the State General Fund, which I've never seen anyone do. Three, you can write a check for 501(c)(3) and donate that, that money to, to that charity. Okay? Keep in mind that there are certain people, I, I know, um, there are close working relationships sometimes between council members and, and solicitors. Solicitors, assistant solicitors, investigator, and solicitor's office, they cannot raise, they cannot, um, they cannot raise money for, for you. All right, so how do people get into, how many ethics terms come about? There, there are two ways. Not compliant, not compliant means that you, um, you just are not in compliance with the law. You did not file the required disclosure. At that point in time, you are given a $100 penalty the moment it's late. And there's nothing I can do about that, y'all. So you, that's just $100 that you have to pay. Keep in mind that these fines amounts must come from your own personal account and not from your campaign account. We will send you a letter that says you are not in compliance, you have failed to file these following reports. If you get a letter, y'all, and, and I can't stress this enough, if you get a letter and the return address says State Ethics Commission, please open it and act upon it. We don't send, uh, birthday cards, we don't send any sort of, um, just kind of general letter out of the mail. If you get a letter from us, it is directed to, to you, and it is because you have failed to file something. So please open it and act upon it. The letter will tell you that in addition to the $100 penalty, we are charging $10 a day for every day that you don't file for the first 10 days. After that, it goes up to $100 a day for every day you don't file, until you reach the maximum penalty of $5,000. Keeping in mind that the $5,000 maximum penalty is per disclosure you failed to make. So if in one year, you miss all four disclosures and your statement of economic interest, you are looking at maximum penalties of $25,000. So please take these letters seriously. If you get a letter, open it and immediately file so you can, you can stop the, um, those penalties from accruing. The other, the other way these penalties accrue, accrue is through non-disclosure. Non-disclosure means that you file, but you did not disclose all of the information. Meaning you filed your, your quarterly campaign report, but you missed, let's say, three contributions and an expenditure. At that point in time, that's $2,000 per item you don't disclose. So you are looking at $8,000 in penalties. Again, these are penalties not that Richland County can pay for you, or that your campaign account can pay for you. These are penalties that come out of your, uh, out of your own account. So I've, I've had, um, and if the penalties aren't paid, the, um, the judgment is, dear, uh, is notified of, of, um, the penalties that are owed, judgments are filed. So please avoid, avoid all of that and either file on time, and I understand that things happen, I understand that, that life happens. And if you miss it by a few days, go ahead and get it filed and just pay the, uh, the $100 penalty and don't let those fines accrue. Do we have any questions at this point? All right, so we talked about things that get people in the, um, in trouble most often, right? These are the things that get, um, the, the kind of paperwork penalties that add up. There are things that get people in the most trouble. Influencing the outcome of an election. No person may use government funds, property, or time to influence the outcome of an election. There should be no government funds that are used to further your campaign or the campaign of, of anyone, um, else at your, at your direction. So you shouldn't be in, um, the county administration building making copies for, for your campaign. Um, you should not be using, if you have a county-issued cellphone, laptop, or, um, or email address, you should not be using any of those things to further a political campaign. Your campaign and your work as a county council member should be completely separate, both in the way you spend that time and in the way you spend, um, spend any resources. So for example, it would be inappropriate to stand up at a government, uh, at a county council meeting and say, hey, guys, you know I'm on the ballot on Tuesday, make sure you vote for him. It would be inappropriate for you to send, uh, for Councilmember X to send to Councilmember Y an email using county resources that says, hey, you know, so-and-so is running, uh, for Coroner, I really think that we should vote for him. It, it really becomes, um, that, that black and white. Make sure that you are completely separating any sort of, um, government resource from an election, uh, campaign. There is an exception, and that is if there is a ballot measure that is on, um, the ballot. Let's say that you guys propose a, a tax increase for, for whatever reason, and, um, everybody is going to vote on it. You cannot use government resources to encourage people to vote yes, nor can you use government resources to encourage people to vote no. You can use government resources to, to educate the public as to what the vote is about. We are proposing, um, uh, this, this penny increase, and if we get that, we will do X, Y, and Z. And that's it. Other than that, though, there should not be government resources used, um, used to affect that in any way. Any questions? Okay, conflicts of interest. Y'all, this is, um, this is the stuff that gets people in serious trouble. Because not only, um, does the, the Ethics Commission investigate things like this, but, um, SLED investigates things like this, uh, FBI investigates things like this. It is using your, your position in order to obtain an economic benefit for yourself, for a family member, for a person with, um, whom you're associated, or for a business with which you are associated. And these are what we call 700 violations. 700 violations are our most serious violations. This means that as a public official, you have taken the things under your purview and you are using them for a benefit that is either to yourself, a family member, a business with which you're associated, um, or a person with whom you're associated. So let's talk a little bit about those definitions and examples of when this comes up. All right, family members, spouse, parent, brother, sister, child, mother-in-law, father-in-law, son-in-law, brother-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandparent, grandchild, and in-laws. All, because the reason I say and in-laws is because the definition used to not include in-laws, and now it does. So, so really keep that in mind. An economic interest is one that is distinct from that, from the general public. So let's say that you are getting all county employees a raise, and you happen to have a brother who is a county employee. That is a very broad economic interest, you can vote on that. If you are doing something that is very specific to a family member, then you cannot vote on that, you must recuse yourself. So, um, for example, when I, in, I think it was 2018, 2019, I had a county council member, it was not Richland County, it was one of our smaller counties, called me, and he said, Megan, um, we're looking to hire a new county administrator, and everybody is telling me that I can't vote. I said, okay, sir, why are people telling you that you can't vote? And he said, they, they say that if I vote on this, I'm going to be breaking the Ethics Act. Just a little tip, if you are about to do something and everybody in the room tells you that what you are about to do is a violation of the Ethics Act, it is probably a good idea to pause. Okay? Cause, cause there's a, a good chance that if everybody has a concern that this is a violation of the law, that there might actually be a violation of the law. So I asked him why people had that concern, and he told me that everybody thought that this woman was his sister-in-law, the woman who he wanted to hire to be the county administrator. And so I asked him why he thought that. And he said that people thought that because she was married to his brother-in-law. Which to me sounds like a sister-in-law. And he explained to me that, that we were all confused that she was not his sister-in-law, she was simply his brother-in-law's wife. That he didn't understand why he couldn't vote to give her this six-figure job. But those are the exact relationships that the Ethics Act is trying to, uh, prevent from, from, from happening. A, a relationship where someone in a position of power, because of that power that is entrusted in us by the people we serve, we cannot then go turn around and give those, give economic benefits to our family members. We can't give economic benefits to ourselves. We can't take taxpayer dollars, we can't take, um, any sort of, of government money and enrich ourselves. Keep that in mind. We have issues where there may be, um, I'll say this, keep in mind that a state statute will always take precedent over a, a county guideline. So if there's a guideline that says you can use money in this way, and that guideline contradicts the state statute, please follow the state statute. A person with whom you're associated and a business with which you're associated, these are also people that you not use your power as an elected official to benefit. A person with your, with whom you're associated does not simply mean a friend or a neighbor. A person with whom you're associated is a person with you, with, which you have a, um, a business interest, there's some sort of shared financial interest, um, and, and there, and those are the people that we are looking for. So a business partner, you can't enrich. For example, let's say you, you own a landscaping company, and there, and there, you have a business partner. You can't say, I'm going to remove myself from this transaction, and only my business partner will, will get paid for this, and we're giving this landscaping contract to him. You also can't do it for a business with which you're associated. And, and a business with which you're associated is one in which you, a member of your immediate family is a director, officer, owner, employee, or compensated agent, or a holder of stock worth $100,000 or more, and which constitutes 5% or more of that, of the outstanding stock at a fair market value. Does anybody have any questions about conflicts of interest, self-dealing, or nepotism? All right. So this is an example, um, of the 700 violations that we're talking about. And it, it says, it's a small, um, it's as small as this. Because one might say that the inaugural ceremony is a part of his official duties. And, um, this particular respondent used county money to pay the rental fee for that building. Again, that's either a campaign expense or it's a personal expense. But if it is not an expense, then it needs to be passed on to taxpayers. So, so it's, it's, it can be as little as $100 or, or $50 or $20. Just make sure that, that taxpayer funds are used for tax, for the purposes of the taxpayer, and not as, um, a way to reduce funds that should be spent from a campaign account or personal funds. All right. When you are in doubt, if you have doubt with your, your duties under the Ethics Act, you can, I want you to ask yourself the following question. Is there an economic interest for you? Is there an economic interest for a family members of, a family member of yours? Is there an economic interest for a person with whom you are associated or a business with which you are associated? If you answer the question, any of those questions, yes, then you must absolutely recuse yourself. And we'll talk about how to recuse in a moment. If you are unsure of the answer to that, that question, then you can ask us for an informal or formal advisory opinion. And we'll talk about that, uh, momentarily. Here's how you recuse yourself. You must put your recusal in writing. It is not enough to simply say at the meeting, "I'm recusing myself from this." A recusal must be in writing. And it must describe the, the matter requiring action or decision and the nature of your conflict. At that point in time, everyone can give that writ recusal, uh, to the chairman, and Chairman, sir, you need to make that a part of the minutes of the meeting. Does, um, does Richland County have a uniform recusal code, uh, form?
Miss Walker, I'm, I'm writing that down right now.
Okay. And, and Chairman, you don't, and Chairman, you don't have to. Uh, people can, can write it down over a piece of paper as long as it makes it into the meet, to the minutes of the meeting. Uh, but I, it's, it's oftentimes easier for you guys to, um, to just have a, a, a form letter, and people can just fill it out and make that part of, of the minute. I also want to, to share with you guys that when I ask questions or when you ask me questions, I treat all of these in these training sessions as hypotheticals. So please don't think that if you ask a question, I'm going to start pulling forms and documents to, to get to the bottom of why you asked the question. I want y'all to be very comfortable in asking these questions so that you are comfortable in, in following the act once we finish this, with this conversation. All right, does anybody have any questions on recusals? All right, we'll keep going. All right. If you are not sure of your duties under the Ethics Act, I mean, you can request an, an opinion. There are two types of, of opinions you can request. Either a formal opinion or an informal opinion. A formal opinion is binding on the commission. It's actually issued by our commissioners. They're published on our website. Those opinions take a long time, um, to, to publish. Usually, uh, it's usually several weeks. And they are usually for very broad questions. Like we had, the latest, um, opinion we published was whether or not, um, elected or, uh, public candidate, candidate for public office in South Carolina can accept Bitcoin or any form of cryptocurrency. Our, that was no. Uh, no, no, you can't accept that as a campaign contribution. So they are very broad and, and usually apply to a wide range of individuals. The other types of questions are informal advisory opinions. Those informal advisory opinions are usually very personal, and they're, you know, can I vote on this? Can I accept this job after leaving my former employment? Things of that nature. And we can get those to you in as little as an hour and as, as long as a few days. Keep in mind though, that if you request an opinion, you must request an opinion about something that is prospective in nature, meaning that it has not happened yet. The opinion must also be about your own conduct. So Councilmember X can't ask us for an advisory opinion for the conduct of, of Councilmember Y. Okay? The other thing, um, to, to keep in mind though, is that if you've already done something, please don't call us for an advisory opinion through that what you did was okay. Because we can't give you advice on something you've, you've already done. What you've already done, either broke the law or did not. So make sure that you give us these, um, these opinions before you take action. And please don't call at 5:00 and say, "Hey, Megan, we had a council meeting at 6:00 with advisory opinion on..." It's a little bit more than time enough. Call earlier that day, we can usually help you. But please put it a couple of days because you might have several advisory opinions that we can do with that. If you could do me a favor, y'all, write this name down because this is the person who will walk you through all this. Our general counsel is named Courtney Laster. K O U R T N E Y L A S T E R. Her email address is C L A S T E R at ethics dot S C dot G O V. And she will walk you through many and all of these issues that require advisory opinion. She's very smart, she's very, very thorough. I always tell people she's so smart, she went to Clemson, and I hired her anyway. So please, please have her as a resource, okay? She's, uh, she's a world of information, and, and she's very good at walking public officials through, um, through these, these ethics, mindset. All right. Does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Yes, someone does.
Okay.
Uh, when you, when you're asking or requesting for an opinion, are these opinions made public?
You can request, um, you can, so our formal advisory opinions are, are public. Our informal advisory, by public, I mean, they are published the same day we issue them on our website because they, they apply to a multitude of people. If there is a, an issue that you have that is private, you can request a confidential advisory opinion. And if someone were to request, um, like FOIA advisory opinions on certain issues, we would reject any and all identifying information so that no one would know that it came from you. Okay. Anyone else? There's one thing I want to say before we move on, and, and I know I'm running out of time, and we'll be wrapping up here shortly. Um, when you recuse yourself, it is often a good idea to also leave the room while the matter is being discussed. Because there are times when someone will recuse themselves. And as you guys are, are well aware, all of these meetings are live-streamed and, and recorded. And we will see someone recuse themselves, and then they will call, someone will call for the question, and the person will shake their head no. And they'll shake their head yeah. And that's not really recusing. So just to keep yourself from even being tempted to do that, it doesn't hurt to leave the room. The other good idea is that sometimes people will call us and say, "Hey, I'm on this council. My, a fellow council member recused him or herself, but then when they called for the vote, they called three times, and I know that that meant vote yes." So it really gets as strange as that, okay? So if, if you're not in the room, then people can't make those accusations. So what happens if someone is accused of running and filed the Ethics Act? Complaints are filed. And complaints can be generated in, in a couple of ways. One, someone calls us and says, "Hey, I'm afraid to report this person um, because of our fear of retribution, but they are doing X, Y, and Z." We will have a preliminary investigation into that to see if it's true. If it's true, then we will, the commission will file a complaint. All right? Or, or if we have, if we, if not evident, if this may be, the commission will file a complaint. Or sometimes you, uh, wake up and you, you read the paper, and you see that there's a huge issue going on, that a bunch of money missing in, in this town. We may, and look into an investigation, um, for, for, for that reason. If we can confirm certain details, we may file a complaint. The most common way is that someone goes online, downloads the complaint form, fills it in, has it memorized, and sends it to us. At that point in time, my chief investigator and I look at it and say, "If, if this is true, is there a violation of the Ethics Act?" Um, because lots of people file complaints for racial discrimination or sexual harassment. I had someone call me to tell me that, uh, the new clerk of court in their county was slapping people if, uh, if she felt like they weren't performing up to par. While horrendous behavior is not under the Ethics Act, then we advise people, you know, you need to call 911 in this instance versus calling, calling the, the Ethics Commission. But if we look at a document, say, you know, if this allegation is true, then this person has violated the Ethics Act, then we open a complaint. Keeping in mind that these complaints are confidential, right? We will never confirm or deny the existence of a complaint if all we're doing is investigating. Once the investigation is over, um, we have full-time, developed, certain, uh, law enforcement officers. They sit down, they meet with me, and we make a determination as to whether or not we think the case should move forward. If we think it should move forward, we recommend to our commissioners that they find probable cause. In order for probable cause to be found, six of eight commissioners must agree that it is more likely than not that this accused person is under our jurisdiction and that they violated the Ethics Act in, in the way enumerated in the complaint. Once that is, if six of the eight commissioners find probable cause, then the complaint becomes public information. Complaint, um, any grant response by the accused as long as the notice appears will become public information. At that point in time, I'm sorry. If probable cause is not found, then it's stricken from the record. It would never, never be spoken of again. At the point in time in which probable cause is found, then we look to, um, to resolve the complaint. And we can do that through a hearing process. Um, the hearing process is a mini-trial. Um, the accused can represent, um, him or herself, or they can hire counsel. The commission is represented by our general counsel. We pick at random three of our eight commissioners to sit on the hearing panel. They are the judges of fact in a law. They wish, and they issue, um, a decision and order regarding their findings after the hearing. Where this is our call and evidence is interviewed is, is very much a mini-trial. But hopefully we can, um, avoid all of that. And the easiest way to avoid all of this, y'all, is to file all these documents on time, your campaigns measure, and your statements of economic interest, to make sure that you are completely separating, um, taxpayer dollars from your income and from campaign money, that you are separating campaign money from your personal money. And, and to, when in doubt, let us walk you through these issues. All right, you, and I'll give you my cell phone number, y'all. Again, my name is Megan Walker. M E G H A N W A L K E R. You can reach me at 803-603-8108. Um, and, and I'll, I'll be happy to walk you through any issues that, that y'all may have. If you have any questions at this point in time, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to answer them. And, and, and they can be hypothetical.
Okay, Ms. McCall?
Ms. Walker, I just want to go back with the family members. The, 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 the members listed, that's all-inclusive. Is that correct?
So I'm going to tell you that it's, it's mother, father, brother, sister, son, daughter, grandparents, grandchildren, and in-laws.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's in the statute. So always, if you, if you guys, um, go to Title VIII, Chapter 15 of South Carolina Code of Laws, the, the entire statute is written right there. So if you have any questions, make sure that you look at the statute, okay? And if you, if, you know, reading statutes does not always come naturally to people. But if you read the statute and still have questions, I'm just giving my cell phone number, so call me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One more question, Ms. Walker, Ms. Nonoski?
Ms. Walker, you'd mentioned there in your last page of notes about, uh, anonymous complaints.
Mm-hmm.
You mean to tell me that you won't even get the person's, uh, contact information? You'll just receive a complaint totally anonymously and then begin to act on it?
No, no, sir, that's what I'm saying. When I say an anonymous complaint, I mean that someone may not, the accused may not know who tipped us off to this, but we know who the person is. It's kind of like when, when there's a, um, when there's a news, uh, a news article about a person who spoke on the condition of anonymity. The person who wrote the article knows who the person is. They're just not sharing that information.
Okay, you know the name, thank you.
You have a question? Yeah, Ms. Tracio?
Could you repeat your phone number once more?
Sure.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any, any additional questions? If not, Ms. Walker, we certainly want to thank you for a very thorough and comprehensive presentation, um, and your desire to help keep us out of trouble. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If there's anything that we can do for you, please let me know. And, um, we appreciate everything that you do for the people of Richland County.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, do you want to finish up with? Pick back up. I think Ms. Ham was about 10%. Again, we'll hear from Mrs. Stacy Ham, and then, um, following that will be, um, lunch.
Trying to get back to the desktop. It's being difficult. Here we go. You are discarding?
No.
The first one?
The first one?
First. I don't know what the last four slides. Except for the really mean.
Yeah, there are 11, and you need to be on which one?
Number 37.
It says that's the end of the show. There's 11 slides. I'm sure we got the right one.
They'll bring the financial report.
Yeah.
Just the right one, Stacy?
Just scroll down the bottom and see if they're, see if they're in there. Not, I mean, there's only a couple, there's only about 40. They're in the book, so.
It may be in the second presentation that you had.
It's not on that one. You think it's on the other one?
Yes, ma'am, try that one.
Try the second one. If not, then let's move on. Like I said, they're in the book, so. Scroll down to the bottom.
I think that's it. Right there. The bottom one.
That's the last page. Well, we'll get the slasher. All right, so in your book, right after the, um, all the budget information, there should be a page that talks about tax collection comparisons. So we kind of looked at the, uh... So we kind of looked at the, um, taxes from November of 19 and November of 20. Um, coal collections, which is, is, um, for everybody, so that's not just the county's taxes, but it's all the millage agencies. Um, we're just a little bit, 150 below where we were last year, so pretty much on track, not that different. Um, the Fannie Loud bills are a little bit smaller. Um, there was probably some late bills that got paid last year that, because normally most of those bills aren't out by this time, so those were probably older bills that were collected, because it had like 923,000 compared to 242,000. And then if we look at just the general fund taxes, they're about even at 6 million in 2019 and 6.1 million in 2020. And the local option, which is the, the good news, um, last year it was about 18 million, this year it's 19.7 through November, so we're about a million and a half ahead of where we were last year with the local option sales tax, which is good, because that's based on sales, so we are a little bit ahead. Um, I did, um, kind of peek at the numbers through December, and I know we'll be giving you an update later on in February with those, but I did kind of peek at it. We're still around a million and a half more with local taxes, um, our general fund taxes are a little higher than they were last year, but you really have to look at kind of December and January together, because it varies when companies pay and different things like that. We do have about 40% of the real estate is covered through mortgage companies, and those usually do pay. So right now, those have paid in December, so we're kind of a little bit ahead of where we were, but we'll have to kind of see what happens in January, because most of all the taxes come in December and January. But, um, we are still ahead on the local option by a million and a half, or a little bit ahead in the general fund taxes, and that is our strong base in the majority of our revenue for the general fund. I did look at it for all general fund. Um, it is a little lower than where we were a year ago, um, related to a lot of the fines and the fees and different things like that, but we'll do an analysis of that, and that will be coming to you soon, as we get a bit better numbers on those. So overall, the revenue, we're kind of, tax-wise, we're doing good, hopefully that one maybe offsets some of the, um, other issues that we have in our revenue, but, um, we'll just have to keep an eye on where we're, where we're headed. The next page has, um, all our outstanding debt that we have. Um, the general fund debt, our, um, backed by the county's millage for, um, debt service, we have 106 million, we have fire bonds of 7 million that were just issued in the fall, we have the enterprise for the, um, sewer system, outstanding, um, 58.7 million, we have an installment bond of 26.6 million for the, um, Blackwood Economic Development, the hospitality bond that we've been paying on, that's, um, has a balance of 7.8. Transportation van right now is 125. We are issuing a bond that will be, um, closing next month. Um, we are issuing a $100 million bond. Um, we did get both our ratings, we got AAA ratings by both movies and S&amp;P that just came out, and we will be posting that bond tomorrow to go to sale. And so we'll be selling that at, um, hopefully good rates with that, having our AAA rating and everything. So that's good news on that front. The next page has our legal, um, debt margin. County is allowed to borrow up to 8% of our assessed value and no more, that's a state limitation. So we take our assessed value for 2020, which was $1.7 billion, 8% of that would be $139 million. So we have 106 outstanding, but our library bonds, there's two, they total 43 million, and those were issued by a referendum. Anything issued by a referendum does not apply to your 8%, because the people ask for those to be issued, so those do not go against your 8% limit. So when you subtract that, we only have 62 million against our 139 million limit that we're allowed to borrow. So we're only borrowed at about 45%. So we have availability of $77 million to be able to, um, borrow, but the point of, if you borrow the money, you have to pay it back, so, um, they can stagger some of the payments, but consider the more you borrow, that your millage might have to go up to cover the debt payments. Um, we try to, um, keep the millage fairly flat on the debt service and not go up and down, up and down every year with that, so, um, but that does give us a little bit of wiggle room if we need to, um, for different projects. These would be things that are long-term capital projects, and you'll, you'll hear about from the budget cycle. There's lots of projects that need to be done, but there's, um, limited amount of funding for them, but this is some of the, um, funding that is available through the 8% debt limit that we can borrow. We did just finish our CAFR, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, just got finished, hot off the presses, it's 6 o'clock last night, for our, um, bond issue that's going out tomorrow. So, um, we have, and we'll be presenting that to you in February also, um, the CAFR to, um, all council members. And that was about, yeah, just a little bit left of the financial updates. So, questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Um, the, the hospitality fund bond that I see, the 7.845 million, what's, what is the fund balance of the hospita, the H-Tax?
It is, um, I have that here.
Thank you. And that was actually just why you're looking for it. That was a recommendation I was going to make to Mr. Ham, um, Mr. Hayes earlier that, that I forgot to raise my hand on, and that would be, as, as we get the monthly updates on the budget that I heard we were going to be getting, um, to include fund balances would be ideal, because, you know, carrying large fund balances in some of these particular funds doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but, thank you.
Yeah, and the fund balance for the hospitality tax is, um, $12.9 million.
So we've got $12.9 million of cash on hand within the fund. Is there a particular reason we're carrying the, the debt load of $7.8 million in this, in this bond?
Um, I don't think this bond, it's a refunding bond. We refunded, um, prior bonds.
Right.
And so, I don't think you, it probably doesn't have the option to pay it back.
Okay.
There's certain options on, um, you can't, usually can't refund or refunding, and I don't think you can pay it over certain limitations.
Sure, I'm sure. I'm sure there's some type of defecence penalty or something associated with it, but if I'm reading the, if I'm reading the debt service.
Ms. Walker, your mic is on? Your, your mic's on?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah. Not close enough.
Yeah, so, but if, if I read this debt service expenditure summary properly, whoa. It sound, it, it looks to me like we're carrying about, is it? Yeah, it's, it's hard to guess, because this is as of November, obviously, but 300, $310,000 of, of interest expense associated with that bond?
With the hospitality bond?
Yes, ma'am.
That's probably the first interest payment. Most of all, the payments on debt are, the principles are all paid in March, interest is paid in September.
Okay.
And then interest and principal are paid in March, so that's probably the interest payment from September. So that's why a lot of the expenses on the debt service are going to be small, because it's just the first investment.
Yeah, I'm sure you can see where this line of questioning is going, though, just curious as do we, uh, as to why we're carrying the interest expense of a bond with a fund, a fund balance that tremendously exceeds the outstanding debt, so just something we probably should keep on our radar and take a look at, but thank you, appreciate the answer.
And I know, um, we had, um, Mr. Hayes had, where we have the transfer in, and that is from the hospitality bond, so 3 million of that money will be transferred into the general fund at the end of the year, um, that comes to, to offset the expenses that the general fund's covering that's related to handling the hospitality tax.
Just, just observation, let me say, just, it's just wonderful, um, from a financial perspective, um, with the fact that we only had 4% of our debt limit, um, that's 8% debt limit, which is, which is great, and, and having a reasonable, um, fund balance, I think is wonderful, too. Follow up on, um, um, one of the things Mr., um, Walker mentioned, um, can we make sure with those monthly reports, um, that those specific fund balances like, um, H-Tax and all are, are included in the monthly reports?
Okay. Good to hear.
Mr. Mr. Ann Askey.
Hey, Mr. Herr. We've got something that was given to us here in our information, is some, some individual that looks like called into the Ombudsman's Office, and the question was, we'd like to speak to someone on council as to why the millage rates are so high. Maybe you could address that for all of us right now?
Well, the county's millage rate has stayed fairly flat. We didn't raise it at all this year, most of the millages didn't go up at all this year. Um, the, the majority, about two-thirds of the total millage rate is all related to the schools. Um, between the schools operating and the school's debt service, that's about two-thirds of the millage is related just to that. Um, everything, everything else, for all the millage agencies, the county and all, is the other little third of that millage rate.
Thank you. One other quick comment. Um, with the monthly report, another thing that may be helpful, too, is if we, um, make sure during each month, if council members have specific questions, and making sure answers to those questions are incorporated in the monthly report would be helpful.
Do they have, um, questions ahead of time?
Yes.
Or questions from the prior month?
From the prior month, ahead of time, um, we incorporate those in the report would be good. Any further questions? If not, um, Mr. Brown, I think it's lunchtime?
Yes, sir, it is.
And according to our schedule, we will return.
Thank you.
At 1:00 p.m. 1:00 p.m. today.
My name is Dale Welch, I'm the interim director for Information Technology Department. Our department is comprised of three divisions, the Geographic Information Systems Department Division, the Business Development Services Division, and the Network Telecom Division. Uh, Network Telecom also support the Columbia-Richland County 911, uh, Department as well. We have, uh, 49 total employees in our department. I know most of the council members here, especially all you, looking forward to getting to meet the new council members. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, members of council. My name is Clayton Boyner, I'm the Director for Community Planning and Development. I oversee approximately 100 employees across eight divisions, uh, being the Assessor's Office, the Business License Center, Building Inspections, Conservation, uh, Community Development, uh, Planning Services, zoning and new development, and the Register of Ds. office. And, uh, Community Development, in addition to the, uh, uh, Community Development Block Grants that we receive in, in terms of our annual allocations, we also, uh, oversee the Disaster Recovery Grant and the Mitigation Grant from Housing and Urban Development. Uh, but welcome, and, um, happy to meet all, uh, the new incoming council members now, and good to see y'all. Hope you have a great, uh, rest of your treat.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Sandra Haynes, Director of Animal Services. Animal Services is comprised of two departments, that's Animal Care, Vate Control, we have a total of 27 employees.
Y'all hand it over to ACA Thomas.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak again this afternoon. Uh, I am Lori Thomas, I've been with the county now for about seven weeks. I oversee, as you already know, budgeting grants, finance and procurement, human resources is another area that I oversee, as well as risk management. And with that, I'm going to, um, ask my department heads to introduce themselves.
Good afternoon again. My name's Stacy Hamm, I've been with the county since 1995. I'm over finance and procurement. We have, um, 27 employees, and the finance department has payroll, AP, AR, and, um, general ledger, and then procurement handles all the procurement in South County.
Good afternoon, I'm Delight Hand, Director of Human Resources for the county. I've been with the county since, uh, 1998. Ms. Hamm, I was a few years old, and the Human Resources Department is responsible for, uh, a lot of the things the new council members have experienced, onboarding, benefits, advertising for jobs, we're also responsible for Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, responsible for classification, job, uh, compensation. We also service, uh, a few hundred retirees with the county, and obviously applicants. Our main function is to serve it, provide services to applicants, employees, and retirees.
Good afternoon, Ken. My name is James Hayes, Director of Budget and Grants Management. This is year number 17 with me for the county. I oversee budget and grants management. On the grant side, we have the both grants that come into the county and the grants that go outside in the form of H-Tax and combination tax and discretionary grant. I have eight employees, four on the grant side, four on the with side. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, my name is Brittany Hoyle Terry, Director of Risk Management. Our internal divisions are Insurance and Claims, Safety and Fleet, and I have 10 employees.
Our team looks forward to working with each of you, and with that, I'll turn it over to John Thompson.
Good afternoon, you all. Uh, I work for seven different departments, Alvin Estland Detention Center, Court Appointed Special Obolus, Emergency Services Department, Operational Services, Public Works, Transportation and Utilities. Uh, we have six of the directors here today. Uh, Director Dante Roberts of Court Appointed Special Obolus is at home in quarantine due to COVID exposure, indirect COVID exposure, so we want to make sure that he was at home safe and not to expose anybody here. So with that being said, I'm going to ask my colleagues to come up here to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Ronald Myers, I work for Red Roof Inn. Just going to let you know, we leave light on for you. I'm the Director of Alvin Estland Detention Center, we got 342 full-time employees, six part-time employees, we have two separate divisions, we have a juvenile division, which makes up a 24-day juvenile facility, and a 1,000, 124-day adult facility. Been happy to work with you, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Mike Lemire Meyer, I'm the Transportation Director, we oversee the Penny Program. Of the 15 positions we have in the department, we currently fill 13. Uh, we have one new hire coming on, on, on March 1st, and then we have a position that should be advertised soon for a new finance manager. We've been taking, we took over the program act in November last year, it's going well, so, uh, looking forward to working with all of you, the new members of the Transportation Ed Act Committee, as well as, uh, full council.
Good afternoon, my name is Randy Pruitt, I'm the Director of Operational Services. We have 76 positions. We are responsible for all facilities, grounds, mailings, printings, and copions throughout
Good afternoon, I'm Bill Davis, uh, they told me, Doc Thompson told me I need to keep this short, so I prepared a 45-minute, uh, speech for you. I'm just kidding. Uh, I'm Bill Davis, I'm the Director of Utilities, and, uh, we provide water and sewer services in the northwest and southeast part of Richland County. We currently have a budget of around $11 million, where we are using that for operation and maintenance of the facilities that we have, as well as, uh, short, uh, capital improvement projects and other improvements to the system, extensions of the system, as well as, uh, paying our bonds, where we have larger capital projects. We have 32 positions in, in utilities and 28 We have 32 positions in utilities and 28 are currently filled. We're looking to fill the other four. And we are glad to serve you in any way we can. If there are any questions that come up, please let us know, and we'll be glad to help you. And congratulations, new council members.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Michael Byrd. I'm the Director of Emergency Services. And I guess our department gets called when something doesn't go right for our citizens and visitors. We have a lot of divisions in our department. Emergency Management, Emergency Medical Service, our ETS or 911 system, Fire Enforcement, Hazardous Materials. We permit over 800 sites in Richland County that have extremely hazardous materials. We have a Communications Division and an Admin and Support Division. And across all our divisions, we have 249 FTEs and seven part-time positions. In addition to those, we also fund out of our department 252 firefighters that are stationed at our county fire stations, 95 volunteers, and we also fund 51 FTEs that are assigned to the City-County 911 Answering Center. Thank you.
Good evening, or good afternoon, sorry. I'm Mike Maloney, Director of Public Works, and I go way back to the last council retreat, which was the first thing, although I didn't as Director of Public Works here for Richland County. Our Public Works has a Deputy Director, Chris Eversman, who's also takes care of our Airport Division. So we have an Airport Division, Administration Division, Engineering Division, Roads and Drainage, Solid Waste, Special Services, and Stormwater. Each division has a General Manager, and so we are performing a multitude of different types of activities with Public Works. There's 131 full-time positions and four part-time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Ashia Myers. I'm the Assistant to the County Administrator. I'm responsible for the coordination of the day-to-day activities and operation of our county administration office, to include the coordination of your annual retreat, as well as I attend all of your council meetings, committee meetings, to ensure that the information is properly disseminated to your departments for executions of your policies and procedures. Thank you. I look forward to working with you all.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Ruble. I'm the Director of Economic Development. I've been with the county for about five years. However, I've been doing economic development on behalf of the county or in the county since about 1993. I manage an office of five people, Lena Meany. We do economic incentives and grants, anything to bolster economic growth for the county. We also have four, five industrial parks that we oversee. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Carter, and I am the County Ombudsman. And we are responsible for responding to concerns, questions, and service requests, and also freedom of information requests. Currently, I have seven employees, and we have three vacant positions that we wish to fill soon. Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
So there are a few people that were not able to be here at this point in time. You may have met them before. Want to recognize our Director of Government and Community Services, Chris Kiefer, as well as Mrs. Beverly Harris, who is out of PIO. And before we get started with my presentation, too, in terms of the state of the county, I do want to tell you that over the course of this past year, I have had an opportunity to work with several of these men and women that you see before you, begin to develop relationships, begin to better understand the work environment that they're dealing with. And I just want to say publicly to them in front of you, thank you all for what you're trying to accomplish. Thank you for putting up with me. I know that some of the things that I asked you to do, some of the expectations that I've kind of put out there before you, may set you on a different course than maybe you were on before I got here. But again, I appreciate you indulging me, and hopefully going forward, I can make you look good. I can take the work that you do and provide that to our citizens in a way that makes you proud. So again, thank you for what you do. I appreciate you. And with that being said, members of council, you do have a strong team of individuals to help with moving this county forward. I do want to take just a brief moment here because I do have members of council present. We do have a new coroner. And while we're not typically in a council session, the coroner has informed me of some financial needs based on COVID-19-related response, that there has been a large increase in that office's budget. And so she wants to meet so that we could discuss what her needs are. So just want to give you a heads up that I'll be coming to you after meeting with the coroner, trying to determine what the needs of the office are to see what different steps we may need to take. So just want to give you that heads up as she notified me of those concerns. For the next 10 minutes or so, I want to talk to you about the state of Richland County. The annual council retreat offers us an occasion to reflect on the decisions we've made, the works we've performed, and the results we've experienced over the past year. Equally as important, it allows us to analyze and learn from our past efforts and consider how best to set a new strategic direction for Richland County. As we prepare to chart the new course, I have no doubt we will be confronted with many impediments along the way. The challenge for us would be to address, to navigate, and to resolve the lingering problems of the past while facing tough financial decisions and the global pandemic of the present. According to the recent National Strategy for the COVID-19 Response and Pandemic Repairment Document released by the White House, on January 9, 2020, the World Health Organization announced that there were 59 cases of coronavirus-related pneumonia. Just one year later, the United States has experienced over 24 million confirmed COVID-19 cases and over 400,000 COVID-19 deaths. In South Carolina, the Department of Health and Environmental Control, SCVHEC, has reported over 380,000 confirmed COVID-19 cases and over 6,000 COVID-19 deaths. And with over 31,000 confirmed cases and 400 COVID-19 deaths in Richland County. Questions and uncertainties surrounding the potential long-term impacts of COVID-19 dominate much of 2020. Hearing the financial concerns expressed by citizens, businesses, school districts, and many other public and private sector entities, Richland County initially responded by taking action to provide roughly $1.75 million in financial relief to assist first responders and other public safety personnel and the community's most vulnerable residents during the COVID-19 outbreak. This funding allocation allowed our first responders to purchase much-needed PPE, personal protective equipment, provided financial assistance for citizens and small businesses, and helped provide food security for seniors and low to moderate income families exhibiting substantial need. Recognizing the need to reduce the financial strain being felt by businesses and residents during the outbreak, in spring of 2020, county council took action to waive fees for late payments of business licenses, hospitality, and local accommodation taxes for 60 days. County Council also voted to suspend for six months the water and school utilities rate increase that was scheduled to be effective July 1, 2020. In addition to providing financial relief, Richland County government has focused on mitigating and reducing the spread of COVID-19 throughout the county. County Council passed a countywide mask ordinance in July 2020 that remains in force. The ordinance requires residents to wear face coverings in public to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. To assist the public in complying with the ordinance, the county acquired a package of over $67,000 disposable masks. The masks have been distributed at various sites throughout the county on a first-come, first-earned basis, and that effort continues to go forward. The county has also partnered with Prisma Health to provide a free COVID-19 testing site at the Columbia Place Mall. In the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, partnerships have proven to be a bright spot for Richland County. Partnerships with nonprofit organizations help get needed resources to individual citizens. Partnerships with the medical community helped us to better understand the facts surrounding COVID-19. Partnerships with other law enforcement agencies helped to maintain public safety during turbulent times. And partnerships with state agencies, the business community, and local governments helped us continue to attract significant economic investment in Richland County. In order for us to realize continued success, we will need to cultivate relationships with our community partners to determine how we can best each benefit from our unique strengths and utilize limited resources that we are entrusted with. And in some instances, this will require us to mend and repair broken and fractured relationships. This endeavor must not be taken lightly or viewed solely in the context of being a good business partner, but rather we must seek to repair and rebuild the broken relationship between Richland County and the public that we serve. I recommend that as a first step, county council adopt a statement of ethics for the organization that outlines how each elected official, appointed official, and employee will conduct themselves. The statement should be included in the employee handbook, and all elected and appointed officials and department heads should be encouraged to review and sign the document to be placed in their personnel file. By taking the recommended action, you communicate in writing and through your actions your commitment to accepting nothing less than the highest ethical standards. And I know this morning you heard the young lady present and say that you do not have the authority over other elected officials, but you can still encourage them to participate because you want to send a message that here's what we expect in terms of a high ethical standard. I further recommend that discretionary funds associated with individual council member expenditures be eliminated, and that county council adopt or re-adopt the county council individual expense account policy provided by the county attorney's office. I recommend that the policy be added to the employee handbook. And by taking this action, you begin to change the narrative that county council uses taxpayer dollars as their own personal slush fund, and you allow employees who are tasked with auditing expenditures to know what expenses are eligible and what expenses are not eligible to be reimbursed. Additionally, I recommend that purchase cards no longer be issued to elected and appointed officials, and that a revised version of the purchase card policy be adopted by the county council that strengthens internal controls for the purchase card program. By taking this recommended action, you eliminate the possibility of an official using a purchasing card in error or for inappropriate reasons, and the county being forced to pay the charges in order to remain in good standing with the card provider. I recommend that we take an overall look at the hospitality tax program in a workshop setting to get a better understanding of how the process works. However, I specifically recommend that county council stop the practice of allocating H-Tax discretionary funding by district. Based on our limited understanding of H-Tax state guidelines, the current practice is inconsistent with the letter and the spirit of the law. By taking this recommended action, you establish a practice that clearly follows the letter and spirit of the law and dispels the accusations that county council uses H-Tax discretionary funding to funnel money into entities for their own personal benefit. As we continue to try to rebuild the public's trust, these must be the steps which show our commitment to doing what is necessary. As we take these steps, we need to let the community know about the steps we're taking to regain their trust. We've had discussions about the need for more robust media engagement, and I agree. During the budget process this year, I'll be recommending that we put more money into the budget for paid messaging, that we put money into the budget to change our website, that we put more money into our technology infrastructure to change our media that supports recording and presenting the county council meetings to the public. As a part of the budget process, I will also be recommending that we adopt an annual budget. By taking this recommendation, you allow for the budget office to more effectively work towards a structurally balanced budget. While there may be more recommendations to come throughout the year, I'll be asking county council to adopt a resolution to work towards a policy that states that Richland County will not budget more in expenditures than it takes in in reoccurring revenues in a given fiscal year. When we are able to adopt this policy, it will really step Richland County on a firm financial footing well into the future. I know that I've made some recommendations that deal directly with Richland County's finances, but make no mistakes about it, the financial state of Richland County is strong. Recently, two of our departments received awards from the Government Finance Offices Association. The Office of Budget and Grants Management was awarded the Distinguished Budget Award, which is the highest form of recognition in governmental budget. Congratulations to Director Hayes and his team. And the Finance Department was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which demonstrates the highest form of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations to Director Hamm and her team. Now, Director Hamm stole a little bit of my thunder when she gave her information this morning. I was going to conclude my remarks by echoing the fact that Richland County had maintained and does maintain its AAA credit rating, which again supports the opportunities that we have to build on a firm foundation, to make it secure and to make it last. And so those are my recommendations for you, members of council. What questions do you have about the information that I shared?
I was taking notes, and I think I missed a little bit about what you said about investing in our website. I'd love to hear a little bit more about that. I also love to, you know, have everybody up here. I think being in Columbia allowed more staff to be here, so we got to see them and meet them more personally. I would also be very interested in having direct access to more of an organizational chart so that we can really see how that looks in the county.
So yes, ma'am, we can certainly get you the organizational chart. In terms of the investment in our technology infrastructure, specifically equipment and things associated with the website, the idea is that I don't have the website picked out. I just know that our website lacks convenience. There's opportunity for the website to be more engaging as well when you visit the page. And so my understanding is that that's just not something that we've invested in before. I don't have any particular reasons, but I believe that now definitely is a good time to do that, considering we're all doing these things virtual for the most part, and citizens have been driven to our website to try to give services. And we've heard from some of them that it's just not easy.
Thank you. I'm nodding my head vigorously over here. So I'm very excited about improvements to the website. I myself have gone looking for an agenda or minutes and realizing that I can't get, I can only get to shoot it from a certain council, you know, a certain government page and not this one. So I would be very excited about that. I also, well, I'll just leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Administrator Brown. For sure, and your recommendations, many I agree, many some I don't. But I'm wondering, I know that you took a lot of time in defining these recommendations. I'm sort of surprised that you did not mention the procurement process and mention equity in terms of contracting with minority businesses. I'm disappointed that I have not seen it. I'm sure maybe you're going to mention it later, but I think that is something that we need to look at. But I think that is something that we need to look at.
Yes, ma'am. And while in this list of recommendations, I did mention that there will be more. That is a conversation that I have had. You heard Ms. Thomas, a new ACA in that department. That's one of the things we talked about. We talked about looking into one of the concerns or questions that you raised prior and former council member Chip Jackson raised, and that's about additional personnel outside of county staff being part of evaluations. So I did hear you. That is something that we are considering. And yes, ma'am, that will be part of some of the things that we're evaluating. So even though it was not mentioned specifically on this list.
I think the importance of it should have been among the major issues that were...
More closely with community partners in repairing broken relationships. Are you at liberty to sort of maybe elaborate just a little on steps that need to be taken to repair, I guess, some of these broken relationships with community partners? Or were you just talking about the public in general with respect to broken relationships?
So relating to community partners, I literally mean talking to... ...in other forms for the community. So that's what I mean. And I believe based on some of those conversations that I've had, just having that open dialogue, people seeming like we want to engage and that, you know, we're not on an island, but that we are a part of the Richland County community, whether you're the unincorporated or incorporated, that we're serving both of those areas. And so that we engage with both of those areas and we connect with those communities.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we receive a written copy of your recommendations?
Yes, ma'am, you will. I did not want to overwhelm. I want to actually share the situation with you now. You will get this document in the form of a memorandum, but then you will get another document with a memorandum that will be the policies and the details of, here are the things I'm really asking you to approve when you take these steps. So that you have the ability to look at them, review them, determine whether or not you want to make changes to those things in some form or fashion, throw them out, keep them. So you will have that. And you have that in time for your first council meeting. Yes, ma'am.
As a new council member, we've had conversations about the hospitality tax, and that was one of your recommendations, to look at it more from a countywide perspective. I would love to hear a little bit more details about it as we've not had, we've had very little conversation coming in as a new council member about the hospitality tax. However, we know that is a hot topic. Please talk a little bit more about that program, how it exists currently, and then how will your changes impact it?
Yeah, so I'll do what I can, more capable, quite honestly, with hospitality tax. The hospitality tax program as a whole, I believe, is something that is beneficial. I think I got Director Hayes walking forward. That's great. But what I want to point out, the areas of concern that I raised, I do think that it's a part of that conversation that we need to have, we don't need to have in a public space. And what I've learned or what I've been reviewing and have concerns about is really what I believe is if you were to review it and hear some of the information, then you would come to maybe some of the same conclusions and that you would not want to do anything that would be improper. And I'm not so sure that everybody is just aware that some of these things may have a tendency of being improper. And because we want to have this high ethical bar, the way you eliminate any of that confusion is that you simply change the behavior. And so one of the things I'm committed to doing is, while I'm putting the ball in your court because that's where it goes, is I want to inform you properly. I don't want you to feel like you left me a hand. And so that's what I'm attempting to do so that you are informed. But some of that conversation we need to have offline. But Director Hayes can tell you how the process works, what H-Tax is, how the money comes in, and what it's supposedly used for, and then those other details. Unless council says, you know, something different, I think we should talk about that in a different session.
Yeah, based off the state statute, we're charged, the taxpayer is charged 2% on prepared food and beverages. It comes in, it's recorded, and it's distributed based off council's discretion. Let me use that one. And let me explain it in a better way. It's used to promote tourism in the county, and we have different aspects of it. Normally, H-Tax committee gives a budget amount, or last year it's been about roughly half a million dollars, $500,000. Groups start applying for these funds in the month of December, like they're applying now, through the first part of February. The H-Tax committee, which is recommended and approved by council members, the vetting funds, we turn the recommendations over to council during the budget process, and most of the time they pretty much approve what the committee has recommended. And that's one aspect of H-Tax funding. There's also a pile of money that is going from, it's not called a H-Tax fund, but they go toward what we call council ordinance agencies. There are four different ordinance agencies that get H-Tax funds. There's the Council Auditorium, there's Adventure, there's Historic Columbia, and there's the Columbia Museum of Art. These groups are part of the statute ordinance for the county that they're funded annually out of H-Tax. They do not go through the H-Tax committee, but they do have to quote-unquote "apply" in our June grant system, return again the recommendations over to council, and then council, of course, approves them out. And then there are a couple other tier special promotions, tier three. But again, the process is the same. These groups apply to June grants. We turn the process over to council during the budget process, and then council makes a motion to fund these organizations. But they all come from the 2% tax on prepared food and beverages.
So my follow-up question would be, Mr. Brown mentioned currently these funds are somewhat, and this is my takeaway, council members are recommending these funds, or these groups are coming? Because I really want to, I know what I've heard, but I want it to be clear from you.
Sure. So again, detail-wise, Mr. Hayes, stay here. But my understanding is that there is a pile of funds that individuals can apply for, and I use that term because I don't know what else to say. By addressing it, they might come to you and say, council member Barry, we have this program that we believe to be of good service to the community. And it may be in the process of eligible to get H-Tax funded. Then you would say, okay, I want to award X number of dollars. Okay? That award that you make does have to go through the council. But in going through the council, it may go through in form. So there's not really, you know, a debate or determination as to whether or not that has more value or more effect using money there versus another H-Tax-related environment. It's money that's kind of a portion for your decision-making, and you may make the decision to award that, and then that's supported. And so my understanding is from the process is that really what should happen is someone could come to you, you know, and you would point them in the right direction. But ultimately, if the body of the council will make a determination that that award, you know, is appropriate, you know, more advantageous, what we're going to do, it will not just be because you said you wanted to spend that money here that we would then just process that payment and spend it.
So these funds that we're currently speaking of do not go through the process, the application process of December through February. Is that correct?
So let Mr. Hayes explain it to you, but everything goes through? But I'll let him walk you through so he can answer your question.
Yeah, so every group that receives H-Tax funding, be it on a council ordinance level or converted by the committee, has to apply a June grant between December 5th and February 5th. Council approves these different pots of money for H-Tax, be it ordinances, be it the H-Tax committee, or be it the pile of money that's been set aside for each individual council member discretionary allocation. But those groups who could get funds from, recommended by the H-Tax committee, but also in addition to that get funds from an individual council member, those individuals normally approach a council member at any point in time throughout the fiscal year. And then at that point in time, there's a request of allocation that's sent either to the clerk's office or to our office, gets on the council agenda. And then, of course, the council member makes a motion to approve that item. This group may or may not have been funded already due to H-Tax committee or even by a council ordinance. But what council did change over the last couple of years, if it's a new group that has not been previously funded before, before they can get on the council agenda, they have to go through budget and grants so that me and my staff can verify that it is a variable viable tourism-related project.
I would like to add some additional steps. And if I'm wrong, please let me know. One thing is that individual that is from a 501(c)(3) may contact their council member on behalf of that organization, not as an individual. That's the first thing. The second thing is that no money can go to any entity without finance approving it as being eligible. That's the second thing. So it's just not said, oh, this council member wants this so you can get it funded because finance budget has approved that they meet all of the eligible requirements. Those are two important things that were not mentioned. The third thing is that when it comes before council, like council votes for anything, each council member has the authority to say yes or no. So the way you stated is that council members can't say yes or no, but that's not the case. And in some cases, we've had council members to say no. So they get the same vote as the regular discretionary funds get. So I just wanted to make that part clear.
Yes, ma'am. And if that's the way it was received, I'm not suggesting that council was not voting or that members don't have the opportunity to vote. Again, what I'm trying to do is share with you concerns that have been brought to my attention that I believe we need to discuss in another format that would suggest that the process that we use, while the form fits, there may be a challenge between the form and the substance.
Yeah.
And ultimately, I want to leave it in your hands, but I want to make that clear because one of the things that we talked about, and I believe that everyone here wants to do this, we want to remove, eliminate, rub off any notion that Richland County somehow misbehaves. And this is one of those areas where there's ambiguity that we can clear up, and not doing so sends a different message.
And Mr. Brown, I appreciate and thank you for bringing that before the council. But it's important to give all sides of the issue so that we can make a grounded decision based on factual information. Because if not, if one or two people don't like it and brings up the issue or constituents either, we need not throw out the baby with the water. So we need to be able to vet all areas to address the concerns and then make an informed decision on it.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me take this opportunity to just provide at least a brief, short perspective on the hostile attacks, particularly for new members. The primary reason hostile attacks, council acted vote on it originally is the whole idea was to simply figure out a way to do as other counties, since we were a destination county as far as the state is concerned with having a state house and so forth, how do we figure out a way to take advantage of tourism and improve tourism in our community? And one way to do that was through hostile attacks as other communities were doing that. Now, the original intent when we passed hostile attacks, the idea was to just simply focus on some major projects. At that time, the hostile attacks was primarily focused on three major projects, and then they were funding for grants. Those are the only two options. And those major projects, we were in the process of developing a state-of-the-art destination farmers market. That ended up not happening for a lot of reasons, and that ended up in Lexington County. The other project was the Township Auditorium. That's how we redeveloped the Township Auditorium and made the changes here. And the other project we wanted to do was a destination recreation facility in the county. We originally tried to do that out in the northeast-west area, and that was...